All right, all. Call this meeting in the Board of Selectmen September fifteenth, open at six oh four AM. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
PM.
PM, close enough.
AM, PM. My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm all messed up thinking since we have Rachel remote here, it's a different time zone, so.
Ah.
All right, we'll do a round of introductions. Start with Joe.
Joseph Baker.
Jennifer Gill.
Richard Dumbles, Chair.
Peter Crusoe, Town Administrator.
We have Rachel Anderson, remote.
Yep.
All right, diving right in here. It's a new business. FinCom, do you guys want to call your order to me?
I'll call our FinCom meeting to order today.
Okay. And it's PM, not AM. I already made that mistake. Close enough.
Same time.
All right. We want to dive right into the Enterprise program, Peter? So we have the folks from the Enterprise leasing program here. Most folks are familiar with the traditional car lease where you might have a balloon payment at the end or you might be able to buy it at the end. But Enterprise offers a government program for municipalities, state, federal, things of that nature, where there's almost a third option to help us out. And Rob Davis and Jessica Stewart are here to tell us about their program.
Hey, all. Can you hear me there?
We got you now.
All right, perfect. Yeah, Rob Davis. I'll give a quick blurb about myself and Jessica's really going to run the show here, but I am based right out of Newton, Massachusetts, so pretty close to you all. And I've worked with Enterprise for just about fifteen years at this point, and I work pretty heavily in the government sector. So I've spoken with Richard prior to this and have a decent understanding of your current position. And as he mentioned, we offer a program that's a lot more conducive to the government process, especially when it comes to vehicles that may be outfitted in a couple more special ways than the typical trucks you may see on the road. But again, here is support. Jessica really specializes in the fleets of your size and those processes. So wanted to at least jump on and, you know, provide any support I can.
Awesome. Thank you, Rob. So I work with Rob and Rachel quite a bit. So as he said, I work with towns, municipalities, or commercial spaces where your fleets are from ten to twenty-five vehicles, twenty vehicles, because we know your needs are going to be a little different, right? You're going to have different budget constraints, different things are going to be important to you guys. So what I want to share with you today is just kind of an overview of what it looks like to partner with Enterprise on the fleet side and a couple nuances on coming board on the fleet side versus, you know, maybe some preconceived notions of what it looks like on the rental side of things. I want to keep it open, so if there's a question that any of you guys have, feel free to stop me. But I'll just kind of give you a brief overview of what we can really offer. And I have a quick presentation. Is there any questions? I know, Peter, you've been working with Rob. Anything that you wanted to discuss today before I get going with the presentation here?
So just for clarification for the audience, we did front-load you with a vehicle file from the towns. You have access to our vehicle information. And so some of this presentation is geared towards some of our needs. And one of the biggest hurdles that we have are, you know, capital expenditures. So that's part of what they're going to aim at today, so.
Awesome, awesome. Yeah, so I will go ahead and share my screen with you guys. Let me go ahead. Can you see my screen here?
Not yet.
Not yet.
Yes.
Now we got it.
Got it? Perfect, awesome. So again, what we can really bring to the table at Enterprise is really anything you think of when it comes to not only owning, but helping the operational side of things as well. And in the government space, really being able to fix in budget as many expenses as we can. And as Peter said, you know, really working with overall budget, just because what we typically find with our government clients is you're buying cash upfront, so there's a significant cash outlay every time that you guys purchase a vehicle. And what we want to achieve here is really optimizing that cash, right? So instead of buying maybe one or two vehicles, how can we make that same cash go for maybe three or four to get you guys into the vehicles a little bit sooner within the process? And it's a white glove service, so we really take care of everything, whether it comes to financing the vehicle. So essentially, we function as not only the dealership, we're buying the vehicles for you guys, but we function as the bank as well. We take everything off of your plate from license and registration. As Rob said, I know you guys have some special aftermarket that we may want to take a peek at as well, so we can really help you guys customize your trucks a little bit more than you might today. We also have a fixed and budgeted maintenance program for anything outside of your police vehicles. We can still help with the aftermarket with police vehicles, just not on the maintenance side. And then really everything else, right? So fuel, accident, anything you guys need us to do, we take care of it for you. And then we sell the vehicle at the end for you. And I'll kind of show you how we can really take advantage of the overall equity by getting you guys out of the vehicles a little bit quicker than you might today. So that's how we can really get you out of vehicles a little bit sooner into what we call their lifecycle as well. But we'll kind of start from the beginning here. The real big, two biggest competitive advantages of partnering with Enterprise is first and foremost, just from day one, you plug straight into our infrastructure, right? So you're going to not only have me and my team, but you're going to have everything that comes behind us as well. So that's how all of our folks that acquire vehicles for us, our maintenance facilities that we piggyback off of, and then our folks that are going to be selling the vehicles, all of that will be available to you guys, not only for your leased vehicles, but your company-owned vehicles as well. Because at the end of the day, I'm here to help you manage your entire fleet. Might not make sense to get all leases at once, but I want to make sure that we're managing everything effectively for you guys. Second piece is there's going to be a whole bunch of data that's going to be coming at you, right? There's a lot of numbers, a lot of metrics, a lot of industry data that's going to be coming at you. So you have me and my team that are industry experts when it comes to the auto industry as a whole. So you know, we've all been through COVID, trying to find vehicles was not fun. Now we're in the tariff space, so, you know, navigating that with our clients. You know, we're the first people to typically hear of those kind of things, so we can really help you guys buy the vehicles at the right time and get you out of vehicles at the right time as well, giving you a little bit more flexibility than you might have today. Any questions on the Enterprise side of things so far before we get into the operational?
So you guys are the largest buyers in the country of automobiles and the largest sellers.
Correct.
And that's part of where your financial strength comes from, is that network?
Yeah, so largest purchaser of vehicles. So, you know, we're buying vehicles every single day. I myself have bought hundreds of vehicles every single year. So we know the type of questions to ask manufacturers. So you guys are probably familiar with factory ordering, but we can actually, we have experts that are going out and asking for government-specific incentives as well to get you guys the best possible acquisition price, too. So our strategy is not only what we're buying them for, but we want to sell them very strong. I love working with government clients because typically your mileage pattern is a little bit lower, so we can really take advantage of the resale side and get you guys a little bit more bang for your buck on the back end as well.
Thank you.
So how do we buy vehicles, right? So we're kind of talking about that a little bit. Primarily, we're going to focus on what we call factory ordering, so buying directly from the manufacturers. So if you guys have a very specific need, let's say for a police vehicle, and you want it to have exact specs on there, we can actually order that direct from Ford, from Dodge, from Chevy, whoever makes the most sense for us without any additional bells and whistles. Because typically, when you go into a dealership, they're going to have additional things that you might not necessarily want or need on the vehicle. By factory ordering, we can get you exactly what you want. And then we ask for, again, additional money off, so government incentives. Last year, we saved our clients about ninety-six million dollars in just asking for government and fleet incentives for our clients. So primarily, that's going to be the best bang for our buck, but you have to wait a little bit because we're ordering directly from the manufacturers. Typically, it takes anywhere four to six months, depending on the type of vehicle that we're getting for you guys. So we also have an infrastructure on dealerships that we work with across the country. So just like if you guys were to go up to a local dealer, we have a local dealer in every stretch of the imagination across the US. So we're making sure that, again, we're getting you guys the best possible bang for your buck on the front end. I get very excited when I meet with government clients this time of year because 2026 model year just opened. So that means early model year incentives are going to be out there for you guys, and we're going to get the best possible pricing and get you very early in the model year, which on the flip side will help us sell the vehicle a little bit better as well. Questions on acquisition?
So are you buying directly from the manufacturer or are you leveraging the dealers?
We do both, right? So depending on your timing, you kind of give us the timeframe that you guys need. So if you need a vehicle in the next sixty days, we'll leverage our dealers that we work with. But if we have a little bit more time, primarily, we order direct from the manufacturers. So we can do a little bit of both. It just depends on your budget and on your timing that you need the vehicles.
Perfect. And not trying to jump ahead of your slide, you may mention this later on, but when it comes to the government sector and ordering, we usually have a bid process. But you folks are on, you're on the Sourcewell contract via Massachusetts?
Yes, yeah. So I love, again, Sourcewell. Clients are fantastic. You guys have a very aggressive pricing structure with Enterprise as well. So you get the best pricing with Enterprise being a Sourcewell client. And then it takes away that bid process because the bid process has already been done for you guys, so you don't have to do that long, cumbersome process as well.
Good to know. Thank you.
So the flip side then on acquisition is remarketing. So our guys that are going to be selling your vehicles on the back end, again, I love government clients because you guys typically do lower mileage and you take very good care of your vehicles. So we're going to get you a really good resale on the back end. Our folks on our remarketing team sold at about a hundred and nine percent above the black book, so about nine percent above the commercial space. So think of this as like the commercial Kelly Blue Book. So our folks are the best at what they do, and they get actually graded on two key metrics, how fast they sell a vehicle and how much they sell that vehicle for. We leverage our relationships with our dealerships. We have a hundred and fifty remarketing lots that we work with across the country. So we know the dealers that are a little more government-friendly, that are going to be looking for your type of vehicles. And about eighty percent of the time, we're selling direct to our dealers. But then we know sometimes vehicles are a little beat up, right? So we also can send vehicles out to auction for you guys and get the best possible resale for that as well. Anything on the resale side?
All good.
All good. Thank you.
Good. Perfect. Awesome. So a couple other, you know, things that we can help you guys with on the operational side of things is our bread and butter is our maintenance program. So outside of your police vehicles, so we just don't do police just because they're a little bit different. So this is the only part of the program police doesn't go into, but like your maintenance vehicles, your parks vehicles, your admin vehicles can all be enrolled with our maintenance program. Very budget-friendly because it's fixed and budgeted maintenance. So you guys know exactly what you're spending every single year, every single month with your vehicles. And that's going to include your oil changes, tire rotations, things that may happen outside of warranty, up to a hundred thousand miles. So you guys know exactly what you're paying. So budget-friendly and then kind of protects your bottom line away from anything happening outside of that. We saved our clients last year about two-point-three million dollars just by simply having our oversight into what's happening with your vehicles when they go into the shop. So again, having something enrolled here, tons and tons of savings that comes into play there, not to mention you know what to budget every single year in your maintenance. So I don't know, how do you guys extrapolate your budget today for your acquisition price and then your operational budget? Are those one in the same or do you split those apart? For your vehicles?
Well, so vehicles, you know, we periodically buy vehicles through our capital program essentially. So that's not out of the operating budget. And we have what we call stabilization funds that we often use for, certainly for public safety vehicles. The maintenance is in the operating budget. It's a guesstimate based on past history as well as, you know, what we can allow or can afford for tax increases effectively. So.
Sure.
You know, sometimes we go over on maintenance line items, depending on the age of the vehicle and how bad it is. But we're still figuring, I would say, I'm also, I'm the town administrator, but I'm also the Chair of the Capital Committee. We have three members of the Capital Committee here tonight. We also have the bulk of the Finance Committee. We have our Police Chief, we have our Fire Chief, we have our Highway Chief. So we have a good representation of the powers that get involved in vehicle needs. So we're all interested in what you're explaining, I would say.
Yeah. Have you guys, and this might be for the guys in the crowd, too, have you guys experienced any issues with vehicle downtime?
Jessica, Bill Coop on the Police Chief. So, yeah, we haven't experienced it yet, but I have three Cruises that have motor issues that are all like less than fifteen thousand that we just found out about. And they're waiting, the factory's waiting for the cars to blow up before they'll repair them. They've given us a hundred and eighty thousand mile backup warranty on that, so we'll never see a car get that old here. But I just had a quick question about the repairs. You say you save your customers that kind of money. Like, are you talking about repurposed cars, like from rental, or are these new cars?
Yeah, so these are going to be new vehicles, right? So how we save our clients money even for the police vehicles, right? Because we're not going to leave you guys out. We just can't fix and budget your maintenance. We can still enroll you with our maintenance program. And let's say you go into a Firestone, right? And they say your transmission is shot, right? This is an example of one of my clients down in Florida. Went into a Firestone, they said you're going to need to pay six thousand dollars for a new transmission. Everybody was panicking. Our maintenance team, because we're overlooking their vehicles, actually figured out, hey, this vehicle is still under warranty. So we actually got Nissan to cover a brand-new transmission, saving our client about six thousand dollars. Without us, they wouldn't have known where to go, who to ask these type of questions to. Our guys do that, like, work for you. So you guys don't have to kind of guess, hey, does it make sense to replace this now? Does it make sense to sell the vehicle? Does it make sense to fix it? We actually can help you make that decision.
Got you. Yeah, I would say we manage the maintenance on our own. When it comes to fire trucks, you know, those big rigs go to a specific purpose type of repair facility. But otherwise, it's up to the, you know, department head to figure out which repair shop locally that they might want to use. We also are fortunate to use one of the local vocational schools for very, you know, very often significant work that we've been able to get done for what I call short money. Just to supplement also an understanding of our experience, we have in the past built a budget line item. We don't have it anymore, but we used to do a lease-to-purchase program typically with Ford Motor Credit for a police vehicle. And so, you know, we always had a sort of a three-year rotation of that. So we would wind up owning the vehicle, keep it in service until it gets to, you know, about a hundred thousand miles, and then we're looking to put it out to pasture, use it just for, you know, details and that sort of thing. So we have some experience with leasing that's been positive. It does require, you know, building in, you know, a debt service line, if you will, in the budget, which right now we don't have. But we're also this evening talking about the upcoming year's budget, so it's something to consider depending on how one might want to go with what you all are offering.
Yeah, yeah. So you just gave me a lot of great information there. So it sounds like you guys are doing a lot of different things when it comes to maintenance. Did you say you have a facility on site or you guys are leaning on the vocational school more so?
Well, we use the vocational school for occasional specific items. Typical maintenance, though, is the police uses a, you know, place up the road, if you will. Highway is also, you know, uses some of the local service providers.
And then do you guys have like a bill set up with those shops or how does that go?
Depending on where I go at the PD, we have an invoice system with the garages. We also use the dealership on BVT, the tech shop. They'll send me bills. We, unfortunately, we have had quite a few warranty repairs with the fleet recently. We just, we had a, my Durango blew its transmission with a thousand miles left on the warranty recently. So that was a good day for us, I guess.
You're lucky.
Yeah, I would say geographically, kind of where we are, it's tough to find good, reliable vendors that are readily available. So there's just not, you know, there's not a lot of shops in this area. And it was going to be one of my questions is how do you source your service vendors? Do you bring them in? Do you take the cars there? Do we use local folk? How does that all work?
Yeah, so we have over fifty thousand locations that we utilize nationwide, whether it be a dealership, Firestone, Plaza Tire. We have a myriad of different folks that we use. And you guys being a more rural area, if there's not somebody already set up, there are ways that we can set up a shop if there's not one within, you know, ten, fifteen miles of where you guys are at. So we have that option, but chances are that we probably already have somebody on the network that's within driving distance, you know, reasonable for you guys to go up to. So we use local guys all the time. Like, I've had some of my guys, it's like Joe's Tire Shop, and they're already on our deal. So you would be surprised on how many folks we actually are already utilizing us. So a lot of times, it's already people that you're probably using.
Yeah, and just plug in a new zip code. I mean, in a five-mile radius, we have Slatersville, Rhode Island, New England Truck Solutions, Inmendan, Imperial, Chrysler, Dodge Jeep, Imperial Ford and Chevy, Bell and Ham Parts Plus and Telstone Garage. So those are the ones that are within the five-mile radius.
Yep.
And those are folks you've already negotiated prices with that are locked into a contract?
Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I don't really want to step on your presentation. I didn't know if you had more to present or not because you weren't in the screen, but how big of a vehicle do you handle?
We'll go up to like a six-fifty size. Anything above that, we're just, we're not great at, right? So anything above that is a challenge for us. But our bread and butter is really anything from like your F-550 down. So, you know, we can specialize in build dump beds. We're just not into like the big old tractor trailers or like your trash trucks, anything like that. But I, my background, I was actually in the truck rental space for over five years, so very, very familiar with the type of outfit that you guys may need. Typically, what I see on the East Coast is snowplow trucks, salt spreaders, that kind of thing. That's all in our wheelhouse for you guys.
So if Highway needed some dump trucks or the Fire Department wanted an F-550 brush truck, those are things that you can handle, or a small pumper or?
Yep, so as long as it's going to be under that F-650, I've built trucks six-fifty down. I actually just built one out in Minnesota for a gentleman that we custom-made it for him based on their specific needs. So it just kind of depends on what your budget looks like. But if the budget supports it, we can absolutely build whatever truck.
Perfect, thank you.
Yeah, and I would also say, too, we are very creative and I guess there's a very custom solution for each vehicle. So anything that's, you know, as Jessica's mentioned, that has more custom equipment, we're not going to make a recommendation that you're going to cycle it as frequently, right? But say, for instance, if you have half-ton pickup trucks and they do not have that much aftermarket on them, for lack of a better term, we can get a little bit scrappy and we may put it on a five-year hold. However, we may come to you at year three and say, hey, given where the resale market's at and what we can procure a new vehicle for leveraging government incentives, it actually makes sense for you to short-cycle or switch into that vehicle now because you can effectively drive down what we consider your total cost of ownership, right? Just that common denominator that we use to compare vehicles at any point in life to other costs. So we're, it's a fluid partnership. We're not like a dealer that's just going to provide the vehicles and disappear. We want to make sure that we are continually working with you year in and year out to identify your budget and what funds are available and get creative to stay within those. So truly is a partnership and it's something that nobody else out there really does in the government space.
And to piggyback off what Rob said, too, being in the space that you guys are in of ten to twenty vehicles, I not only bring you on as a partner, but I help, I manage your partnership as well. So it's me that you guys meet with onboarding. We'll go through the whole process together. And then we get together twice a year to go through an overall fleet plan. Typically, we'll do right before budget season where we can make, you know, the budget makes sense, and then we'll get together for an annual client review just to kind of go through things that maybe we want to tweak throughout the partnership as well. And then I also call you guys every ninety days just for updates. I can talk to your Fire guys, your Police guys. I'll be your main contact, and then you'll also have my business partner as well in your corner. So it's a living, breathing program. As Rob said, you know, we can bob and weave with whatever's going on in the town. But my job is to make sure that you guys are always in the best possible position for your overall fleet.
I think we got a question in the audience. Mr. Finn?
Yes, Jessica, based on bobbing and weaving, I just had a question. The question was, what is your position on like a vocational technical school relative to the maintenance contract? We use it for a variety of purposes to help us out. And is that nullified parts of the contract? Is it just, that's fine, we'll work with you, it doesn't matter?
Yeah, so think of these vehicles as your own vehicles, right? The only difference is that we buy them and we help you guys maintain them as well. The only thing, a lot of vocational schools, we just want to make sure it's not going to impact the warranty. And if you guys are already using them today, I would say it's a pretty good chance it's not. So just think of your fleet vehicles with us as you would operate your own today.
Jessica, so in all reality, though, if we're getting new vehicles, you're just going to be managing a lot of warranty repairs, wouldn't you say, if that's the case?
Yeah, so I always call our maintenance program, it's more of like an umbrella, right? Where the fixed and budgeted maintenance is if everything went right the entire time, that would be what you guys would pay in oil changes, tire rotations. If things happen outside of it that are weird and crazy, it protects you guys from those big charges, right? So as long as you're getting regular preventative maintenance completed, it really protects you from the bigger things that inevitably happen that may or may not be under warranty. It's more of like an umbrella to protect you guys from those big unforeseen costs.
So I think, I was just talking to Chief Lee out from the Fire Department. I think we could have a conversation with you and probably at some point and probably figure out exactly all about the company, see where we're at, and maybe we could bring that back to the Select Board.
Yeah, yeah. So my, I work with a lot of different police, you know, fleets. I work with the Fire Department. The fire departments and then the service guys as well. So I know you guys all kinda operate independently from each other too, so. I wanna make sure that I have the PD's budget, I have the fire department's budget as well, to make sure that we stay in compliance. Um with what you guys have allocated. Um, real quick, I do wanna show you guys, cause I know you're familiar with. The leasing structure as you've leased before with Ford. I'll just show you guys a quick little um. Graph here on how our financing works. Can you guys see my screen again?
Yeah, yes, thank you.
Okay, um so at Enterprise, we do what's called an open-ended equity leasing model. Um, which is a lot of our clients take advantage of and just for easy numbers sake. Let's say a pickup truck costs forty two thousand dollars, just for easy numbers, right? So you guys, you're either gonna pay cash, pay that forty two thousand. And you own that vehicle, or you're going to finance that vehicle in a traditional finance and depreciate that vehicle all the way down to zero. Your monthly payment, you're looking at about an eight seventy-five monthly payment. With Enterprise, we know that you're going to, we're gonna sell that vehicle while it still has what we call useful life. Left at the end of it, so we actually don't have to depreciate that vehicle all the way down to zero. Which from a, I know there's finance people out there, from a finance perspective, you guys are saving a little bit money from a monthly payment perspective. Um throughout the lease term, but you also get to take advantage of the equity at the end, which is a little bit different than what you. Did with Ford before. So you don't own the vehicle itself, but what you do get is the equity at the end. So let's say in the same scenario, we depreciate that vehicle down to ten thousand dollars, we sell it for twenty-two-five. That equity is now yours to roll into your next vehicle is essentially a down payment. We can strike you guys a check, you can put it back into your budget. Um, so whatever makes the most sense for you guys at that time. Um, that's how the financing kinda frees you up a little bit more than, you know, throwing a bunch of cash out there. Or saving you from a monthly perspective, from a traditional finance.
So that's something I had mentioned, I think, in our prior meetings, that's different with this leasing program versus the other leasing program. Is because of their sales network and their ability to go directly to the dealership and capture more money at the sale. They're able to kick back a bit more money from the sale of that car. We can then get back as a check or reapply towards the purchase or lease of another vehicle. So that right there is the big difference between a traditional lease and the equity leasing program.
Yes, you, yep, you hit the nail on the head there. Um, and it it's marginal. We take, it's a four hundred and ninety-five dollar servicing fee. For us to pick up the vehicle for you guys and sell it for you, but the lion's share, that comes back to you guys. Um, so if we get more money than what we think. That additional money, that comes back to the town. Um, so that's where Rob kinda hit it where. Uh he was talking about earlier, taking advantage of those government incentives and government pricing, but also capitalizing on the resale. That's where it's the second generation of the program that really starts to sing for a lot of our municipalities.
The other thing is this is a bit fluid. It does change depending on the make, model, manufacturer of what it is you're buying. If you're buying, let's just say, like, um, you know, we buy a Ford product, it may not yield as high of a return where a Chevy would. You'd probably get more of a return, so it also does depend on what you're buying as well.
Yep, correct, and that'll be kinda the next phase. If this looks good, big picture for you guys. Um, the next phase is gonna be more the financial analysis where I'll come back and Rob already talked about the. We focus on the total cost of ownership, not just what we're buying vehicles for monthly payment, but what it costs to buy it. Maintain it, sell it, and then I'll present to you guys best in class, cause at the end of the day, it doesn't matter to me which brand we go with. I just wanna show you what's gonna be most cost effective for the town. And then at the end of the day, let's say Ram is a little bit cheaper than Ford, but you guys. Really love Ford, that's up to you on which brand you wanna go with. Um, so we're brand agnostic. We can pick whatever makes the most sense for you guys.
Well, I wouldn't have a specific vehicle that I like, but I think sometime with leasing, you have to have a specific vehicle. That offers you the ability to give people rides in the backseat comfortably, so um.
You know, shove them back in there, yeah.
Do you guys do the outfitting through Enterprise or itself, or do you sub that out?
What did you, you cut out for a second, what did you say?
The lights, the protective cage, radio systems, you do all that.
Yeah, we do it all. Um, so whenever we get together and we'll talk through the police outfit, um we actually have a, an entire team. That just does our aftermarket and our outfitting, so you tell them what you guys want and um essentially they'll write down. Exactly what you're looking for and then they'll bid it out to a couple different vendors. If you guys have someone you really, really like. Um, we can um still go through them, but we do all the heavy lifting for you. So once the, let's say you get a Durango, right? Um, we get that Durango outfitted, we send it directly to the aftermarket vendor. And then you guys don't get charged for it until it is, it is on your lot. So once the vehicle's completed, done. That's whenever you guys take possession and that vehicle you start making payments on. So we, it can be delivered turnkey ready, so if you gotta get graphics on it. Lights, radio, all that stuff, we can work directly with your upfitter on that.
Are you guys using uh MHQ or CMG today when it comes to the police outfit? Well, those were two of the options. I went to um quite a few places to get my prices last time. I went with Island Tech. The last time we bought cars and they're like a CMG family too. Yeah, so. Yeah, there's been a lot of mix-up recently, right? Over the past couple of years in that space with the outfitting. Um, we do a ton of work with Island Tech as well and the guys over there. Continually just talking to us and um giving us opportunities as well, so.
So we gave you, we gave you some vehicle information in advance. Uh, did you have any potential scenarios with cost savings? Not that I wanna put you on the spot, but I I didn't know if you had anything.
Yeah, so I noticed a couple different type of vehicles for you guys, so I don't have, because I don't have accurate mileage. Right now, I was able to pull some for us, so I can share the fleet list that I have right now, that I was able to pull kind of recent. Um, data for, can you guys see my screen again?
Yep.
Perfect. Got this old Ford Ranger here, that's uh uh we got working for you guys. And then we got some chassis. Got fusions and then we got, it looks like our police vehicles down here. Um, so in order for me to put. A budget together for you guys, I need to just run through specs and what these vehicles are being utilized for today. And then I can come back with recommendations and potential cost savings um for you guys, so. Let's just start with the pickup trucks, like which division is utilizing those guys?
The top three are highway. Um, yep.
Highway, like police highway?
No, just the, like the Department of Public Works, it's the highway department.
Works. Got it, got it, okay. And then what are these being utilized for?
Uh, the Rangers is general transportation, grass cutting, lawn mowers, um tris- it's a traditional conveyance for transporting. Highway workers to and from their destinations and mow the grass. It's really not doing any heavy work. The F three fifty and five fifty are uh plow slash sand vehicles and they're doing, you know, asphalt work, patchwork, um things of that nature.
Um, and then what type of outfit is on the back? Is it more of a flatbed? Is it a traditional truck bed?
The Ranger is exactly a pickup truck. It's a, just a micro truck and we really don't even need it. Um, the three fifty and five fifties are dump trucks with a plow. I believe those are um nine-foot Fisher plow setups. Uh steel body and the Sanders are a dump insert.
Dump insert, perfect. Um, and you said how big are the beds on the back?
Uh eight foot apiece.
Hydraulic lift, I would assume on the back as well?
Yep.
Okay.
Electric over hydraulic.
Perfect. What kinda shape is your plow in? Do you wanna repurpose it or do you wanna spec out a new plow?
Uh, we could repurpose the plows, but I would recommend, I would recommend new headsets.
Okay. Um, and then we can do that with really any of the outfitting too, like as Rob said. We're gonna get you guys out of some of these vehicles a little bit faster, so we can sometimes reuse aftermarket. So a lot of my guys will reuse like some of the beds on the back and we can just trade out chassis. We've done that before. Um, or you can reuse your plows as well, so we just need to make sure um I outfit them appropriately and then. In the back of the dump, I would assume then if you're using a plow, you'd probably put a salt spr- a spreader in the back?
Correct, yep.
Okay, do you need steel or aluminum?
Uh, we we've been running steel beds. They don't hold up as uh long as the other uh aluminum or stainless. Um, and I can tell you the trucks that are on this list are um, there's, there's not much left to them, so.
Flintstone vehicles.
Yeah.
Yeah, yes, so especially when it's the, the salt just eats away at those beds. Um, I see that in the east coast quite a bit. Um, so, okay, so we're open to steel or aluminum. I would assume it's just based on price. Is what?
Yep.
Okay, um, okay, so I got the trucks. Do you guys need anything additional outside of these or? The two trucks or is that doing the job for you guys? What's the Ranger?
Police and fire, you guys wanna comment in the list?
Like um highway trucks?
No, no, no.
Oh, cause she was just asking. Oh, yeah, so uh that Fusion right there, two thousand fourteen, that's in the process of being repurposed. For mode of transportation for the fire department, for permitting and such. Um. The uh two thousand fifteen uh Fusion Hybrid, we put that on the road for detail work just to. Keep the pressure off the other cars. The other cars are all line cars that are driven daily, sometimes two shifts a day. That two thousand seventeen Explorer, we just uh. We just uh, we did put a transmission in that. Um.
Okay.
Like six months ago, just to uh save that, with a three-year warranty through the dealership, so.
Okay, so it look, these three are the fire department, you said?
Just the uh, just the two thousand fourteen, it's gonna be like.
This guy?
Inspection vehicle, yeah, something like that.
Um, ideally, um is the Fusion doing what you guys needed to? I always ask the question if you had a Madewand, what would your fleet look like tomorrow? Would the Ford Fusion be what you would choose?
Well, we haven't gotten it yet, so we haven't done any.
I don't think we've had good history with the Fusions, right?
Well, they're not being made anymore, that's why I was asking.
Well, I mean, the Fusion, it, maybe it worked for the town back in the day. I mean, uh. It was a little small for a police car, the Fusion Hybrid, so we use it as a detail car to keep mileage off. The others and runtime off the other cars that are primarily patrol vehicles.
Yep.
But gee, if you could just describe, your core day-to-day uh vehicles on patrol are. The bottom four, is that correct?
Yes.
Right?
Yep.
And so the, the issue is, you know, on just grasping in my mind, and I don't know of others as well. How we would roll in, when and how we would best roll into your program, given that we own all four of those. All four of those are, even the Durango is essentially a low mileage for the town of Millville, so we're not teed up. To buy a brand new or lease a brand new patrol car for the police department in the near term. But the lead times might would would force us to think, be sure we're thinking ahead in the proper timeframe, right?
Man.
Yeah, so ideally what we're planning for is next budget season, ideally. Unless something's like falling apart and you're like, we have to replace this one. In the next six months, then then we'll kinda pivot and figure out what makes sense at that time. Looking at these, I would say you probably don't need to replace these yet, right? But we wanna start thinking about. Okay, what are these gonna be worth in the open market? What do we think we can sell these for? Does it make sense to hold on to them a little bit longer? What does your maintenance look like today? Are they costing you a ton of money in downtime? Um, so looking at this. Strictly based on the year and the mileage, I would say you're probably okay, right? For these two, these. Two might make sense to take a look at replacing, you know, because police vehicles, even though they have low mileage, there's a lot of idle time. Which wreaks havoc on your engine, right? So um that's something we also taken into consideration with police vehicles. Is there's gonna be more idle time, so we wanna make sure we're getting you guys out. Typically, I start planning about. Four-year cycle patterns for a police vehicle, sometimes five, if um if it makes sense. Um, strictly because you guys pay a lot of money in aftermarket, so we wanna make sure it lasts as long as it possibly can. But some of that stuff becomes obsolete, so we take that in consideration too when we're budgeting out. So if I'm looking at this. I would say would make sense from like a year and mileage standpoint, probably number eight up. Makes sense to replace for you guys.
Yeah, but just to be clear, I don't think we're even thinking of going out to replace numbers five and six, right? What we would typically do is turn number seven into one of those, once we acquired another vehicle. That's really the, the way we do it, where we own it. Now, as we get into this other program, we might wanna rethink that's how we do that. You know, several years out is what I would say.
What make it, what make it, make make it lucrative for you though, Peter, is if the buyout for those vehicles is enough to roll into the purchase of a new one.
Right.
Saving the town capital funds.
Yeah.
That's where it comes in handy.
And I think, yeah, so sometimes it actually makes sense to hang on to your lo- your old stuff a little bit longer because. They're not really worth a whole ton in the open market, so we just kinda quote-unquote run them till the wheels fall off, cause they don't have a ton of value. Where your ones that do have some value in them, there, there it's gonna be five, six, seven, right? These ones are probably still gonna have some value in them. They have low enough mileage where we can take advantage of the resale and then replace the other ones, you know, kinda as they die out. Now, your chassis, if these are really long in the tooth and you guys are like, I gotta get my guys out of these. Then we can kind of figure that out as well. Uh, but from an equity standpoint, I'm strictly, you know, kinda licking my chops. For these two, cause they're, they're gonna have some equity built in them, because they're low mileage and um because they're gonna be hitting the market. A twenty twenty, right now, if we sold this guy in twenty twenty-six, it's gonna be in the same market as vehicles with a hundred. Thousand plus, right? And you guys are selling a vehicle with sixty-five, so it's going to sell a little bit better than some of the other stuff that's in the market. So that's what we really try to focus in on for you.
And I just wanna add one thing, Jessica, because we did make a commitment to the police department, that we would buy a police car every other year.
Yep.
And I don't believe we've purchased one in the last twelve months.
No.
So then we should be coming due to buy a police car, cause we have our annual town meeting in May. Before it was like, should we do every eighteen months or twenty-four months? It's easier just to do it every twenty-four months, because we absolutely will have an annual town meeting. And we sometimes have a special town meeting, but sometimes we don't. So if we keep it with the annual town meeting, which is in May, then that just makes a lot, it ensures. That we can maintain that schedule for the police department, so they have some predictability. Um, but we didn't buy one in the last twelve months at least, so that means that. May twenty twenty-six, we, the police department may come up and say, hey, we have, we didn't get one last year, we would like to purchase a new one and that is a commitment that we made.
Perfect, yeah, so if we already have, do you guys have an allocated budget then set aside for the police?
We have a, as Peter mentioned, we have a public safety stabilization fund that we use to purchase those cars and. We try to optimize the price just because that budget, um it needs to go, it's for public safety, so the fire department may also have needs as well. Um, and I think right now in that account, we have like a, a couple hundred thousand, maybe not quite.
Okay, yeah, um, I mean, if we have, you know, even a hundred thousand to play with, I mean, we could do. We could take, you know, some moves here, depending on the ones that are top priority for you guys, where we're like. These are the ones we, that gotta go. So if we're talking, you're, you're utilizing these four for the police fleet. Um, you said the police chief's there, right? I was just talking to him.
Yes, he is.
Yes.
Yep, um, so I would say seven and eight are probably your targets, right?
Yeah.
For you to guys get out of these.
I would think those are pretty young. Uh, I mean, I, and I just put a, I just put a transmission on the warranty. And your Dodge Durango, you look at it, so, uh, so I.
That's why she wants it. You wanna hold on to it and she wants it.
Yeah, I mean, I gotta look at it that way, that. Yeah, I mean, I gotta look at it that way, that truck's valuable, I mean, we just got ten thousand dollars in warranty work for that job. Because of the corresponding parts too.
I'm I'm kind of wringing my hands, I'm getting excited for that guy, because you know, we could sell it, we could sell it for you.
But if she could still get you a lot of money and then buy you two new cars.
Right.
That's, that's what I'm making.
Reality, I I want to sit down and talk with you, and again chiefly, I don't have a love to sit down and talk to you, I don't want to.
Yes.
I wouldn't want to clog up this whole meeting with this, so we could get into the weeds and find out where we're at, you know?
Yeah.
And keep it on, Jessica, if you could, that because we're a municipality, and Jen talked about the annual town meeting, that happens in May. That's when the voters must approve the use of the funds from that public safety stabilization.
Right.
We can't commit to anything until the voters make that approval.
Yep.
Right?
Yep.
So why don't we do this, guys? Let me get with the fire department and police department, because we know that they're going to have specific needs that they're looking for. And if we're looking for, make a decision by May, I would say you guys would be open like beginning of the calendar year for us to really start putting some numbers together.
Yeah, for sure, right? And the highway department, right?
Yeah.
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 So I had a thought, Peter, and just kind of thinking outside the box here, if we were done with those vehicles, one through three, and they don't, they're not going to bring any value to us at sale. We could apply them to to this purchase of a police cruiser.
Yeah.
And that could help out the police department. Just food for thought. So I, so I got a question, I guess, um, more for you, Peter. So if they're on the Sourcewell contract and they've been adopted by OSD, state of Massachusetts.
We don't have to go pro procurement, we don't have that.
We don't need to go, right? We don't need to go up the bid, we don't need to do any of that fun stuff.
It's all right there.
And and I don't think they're looking for a signed contract for us. We could do this in stages, is that what you're proposing? Can we buy a car here, there?
Yeah, so what we would do is, we have to agree upon a fleet plan, right? I'm not here just to acquire you guys one vehicle, you could go to a dealer and do that, right?
Yeah.
What my job is, is to come in, I would partner directly with the town, and then you guys piggyback of Sourcewell's pricing, right? So if we get together and we decide we're replacing maybe one of the highway vehicles to police vehicles this year. That's, that's good. And then we come up with a plan for next year and the following year and the following year. As long as we come up with a plan, we can kind of slow play the vehicles into it. Because budget wise, it might not make sense to replace everything at once. It it will make sense if we kind of, you know, slowly introduce you guys into the program.
Well, but I, and I also think it's good to know in the program what the lease costs are to bake into the various department budgets. That's critical and and establish that line item, right?
So I I guess my.
A new lineup.
My question is more procedural, so um, do you need a vote from us, or do you just need to continue working with them to come up with a model? And we circle back in several months.
And it's department heads working on their specific needs, including highway, right?
We don't need to vote to empower you to do anything.
No, I don't think so, no.
Alright.
Perfect. So I would say I probably need to set up some time with the departments. And if we could get everybody together, we can talk through specs, wants, all that stuff. And if I get that from the departments, then we'll get together at beginning of twenty twenty six, and I'll put a budget together for everybody. And just say, here's what we're thinking for police, here's what we're thinking for fire, and here's what we're thinking for highway.
Highway, yeah.
Okay.
And then the town administrator vehicle will throw that in there. Oh, wait, we don't have that.
The take home.
We might find a way, we might find a way to get you guys a little.
I'm driving it, no, don't worry.
I didn't want to tell you, but we already traded in your Mercedes.
Yeah.
We got four police cars.
That's seven hundred dollar Mercedes, tell me about it.
Now, do you, do you guys do any sort of mileage reimbursement today for any of the folks in the town?
Only on a as uh, per incident, if you will, right?
Yeah.
And it's infrequent.
Okay, yeah, that's always something too that we can take a look at if you start to notice somebody. Um, you know, two and above ten to fifteen thousand miles a year, typically, you're going to save a ton of money in mileage reimbursement. So if you start to see that, just let me know, and we can strategize on that as well.
I think we'll also want to understand better, I saw in your earlier slide, a fuel program that you offer. And we want to understand that uh versus what we currently do and versus what we're currently looking at.
Yeah, what do you guys do today?
We have a WEX card and they have, you know, whatever rate for uh it is for the government. But it it, the new program includes state charges, but not federal charges. And the question we can't yet get an answer to is the program we're under, which is just a regular corporate account essentially. Um, whether that does include state charges or not, and whether it includes the federal charges. So that's, those are questions. We can get into that later with you as well.
Yeah, we we partner with WEX too, um, so that's our fuel um, provider that we utilize. Um, the great thing about WEX though, is we didn't even get to touch on this, we'll talk about this as we start to, you know, make sense of the program. But our website will have really all of the markers that you guys are looking for. And if you're a partner of WEX already, that's going to um, put in mileage into the website for us. And they're all very harmonious together. So if you're plugging in mileage, um, when you're filling up. That'll then go into the website and then trigger, oh, okay, he's due for an oil change, give him a notification.
Gotcha.
And then you guys don't have to manually tell people, oh, shoot, you gotta go get an oil change done. Like you can plan it out a little bit more. Um, so the more of the programs that you have in place, the more they kind of um, sing together on on the website.
Perfect.
Yeah, so, um, Peter, I'll get with you, if you can give me everybody's contact information.
Yeah.
Um, I can get with the departments, and then I can set up some time to go through specific specs, budget, and then kind of a wish list. And then we'll get back together, probably beginning of the calendar year next year, and we'll, we'll start to work through the budget.
That sounds great, appreciate it. This is a great presentation, so appreciate that, yeah.
Awesome.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you guys.
Thank you very much.
Thank you guys so much. Uh.
Good.
Yeah, if you guys need anything from me, um, Peter's got my contact info, so you got my cell phone there.
Yep.
It's a weird St. Louis number, I'm from St. Louis, so don't hold that against me. Um, but uh, if you guys need anything at all, let me know, but I I look forward to uh, to working with you guys.
Perfect. Thank you very much, we appreciate it.
Thank you, guys.
Well, thank you.
Bye.
Thank you.
Alright, moving on, do we want to skip on over to the assessor situation, or do we want to?
That's next up, or unless you want to talk about the budget stuff.
Well, I didn't want to hold.
Fincon.
I don't want to hold it well.
Or you know, we have a guest and you have the other guests too.
Right, we have the other guests, I was trying to figure out.
Yeah.
Do the accessory appointments first, I guess?
Why not?
It'll be quick.
Okay, we'll do it quick. Yep. So the board of assessors that we currently have uh is a three member team. It's occupied by myself, surprisingly, and uh, we have a vendor service that occupies.
Dave Manzello, he's one of the members, yes.
And so there's one vacancy, we can't have more than the three, but we have a vacancy, and I had mentioned to Joe to possibly join it, but we may have another opportunity for Joe.
Yes.
Possibly, so.
Yeah, well, Brian says here in the email that it it could be more than if you want, it's best practice, it's typically three.
Three, right, so if you, and if you moved it to five, right, it has to be an odd number.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so if you move it to five, that's a town meeting vote. So you're really dealing with a three member.
Three member.
Okay.
Not a four member board.
Okay.
So if it got.
One more person.
So if it got voted on, we could potentially go to a five, but right now we'll stick with three.
But.
Yeah, well, because we'd have to make that a bylaw change.
Right, yeah, right, so.
And and Joe's exploring is not definite, um, moving on to the capital committee.
Yep.
As a resident uh member, not as the selectman representative, so.
Which is a huge help, yeah.
So that's up with the moderator for consideration.
Okay.
Yeah, so at the, at this point with uh, with two of us up for assessor's appointments for one slot. Um, you know, Peter had approached me about this capital committee today, thinks it might be a good fit for that. Sounds interesting to me. Uh, I know Judy threw her name in the hat, uh, I'm I'm more than happy to step back from this and just kind of focus on seeing if I can get uh, get into that capital committee.
Perfect.
Uh, and uh, consider Judy for the assessors.
Sure. So I, I think for a while, we've only been running with two members of this board, but.
For a long time.
Right, for a long time. And if one member isn't certified, then the town is jeopardy, goes into jeopardy. It may not be certified, but having a revenue, and it causes problems with collection of taxes. So this is one of the things that I'm pushing to try to fill, so that at least there's more than one resident member on this that can steer the assessor board, so.
And it's a commitment for training, correct?
Yes, yeah, and so you have to be certified, there's some modules online, uh, you go through, they're not terrible, and very doable, so.
Yeah.
Once you're certified, um, you know, it's not, it's not bad, so. Um, so, our next victim, uh, Judy, do you want to come up here and say hello?
Introduce yourself, give your resume and social security number.
Yes, and also your car, so we can trade it in for a police cruiser.
That's what happened, and I I can outfit it though, to make it into a cruiser.
So you have some tax experience?
Yes.
Okay, so, um.
Can you elaborate on that?
Elaborate a little bit. I know we don't really have a letter, so.
Um, so I'm Judy, uh, I've worked with H and L Block for going on sixteen years now as a tax associate. So, and working with the state for going on seven years as the data accountant for the fleet operations.
And you've got some experience with like software integration rollout, stuff like that. Um, so assessor maps won't be a big issue. You can probably steer some of those, and um, you've had your hand in some trainings, so.
She's good with data.
Good data.
Analysis and manipulation and that whatnot, right?
Yeah, and I also received a um, certificate for uh, what I'm in real to, so. I've also done that as well.
You got some experience with the houses?
Yes.
I have the cheapest house in town.
You're gonna have the most expensive.
Assess value is going up, by the way.
Lot of new growth there, I guess, just underground. Lot of new growth. So, um, I'll make a motion to appoint Judy Lamoy to the board of assessors. Um, do we have to stipulate a period of time?
I would say the the three year period ended.
Twenty eight, maybe.
For a three year term ending June thirtieth of twenty eight, twenty twenty eight?
Yeah.
Looking for a second?
Second.
Take a vote, Joe?
Aye.
Jen?
Aye.
Aye, Rachel?
Aye.
Alright, you're our next victim. So, um, there are some modules that have to be done online. Um, yeah, there's some trainings and uh, some little cherry sheets that need to be, to be done. It's not terrible, it's totally doable, but. Uh, reach out to the town clerk and ask her to give you some login credentials, and you'll get that testing done.
Perfect.
You may leave, thank you.
Thank you.
And she'll swear you in as well, so she'll contact you, yeah.
Okay.
She won't swear at you, she'll swear you in. Alright.
Good job.
Thank you very much. Alright, brings us down to D. So, folks may have noticed that we're down to a four person team. We've been absent one individual, and we do have a resignation from Andrew Alward. Um, I don't, well, I I don't know, do we, do we want to read it?
I would read it.
We'll read it. Alright, I'll read it.
Okay. He says nice things.
He does say a lot of nice things, and um, he offers to give me a pay raise. Um, good morning, it is with a heavy heart that I tender my resignation from the Board of Selectmen of Millville, Massachusetts. I have taken a position in Western Massachusetts, which has made it impossible for me to keep my commitment to the town. I thank the people of Millville for their trust in me over the years. Thank you to the Board of Selectmen for their hard work and for everyone's continued togetherness in working for the town and for the betterment of Millville. Finally, but not least, I want to thank all the employees and volunteers of the committees and boards of Millville for their tireless and oftentimes thankless work. It's been one of the most transformative and educational experiences I have had. From the bottom of my heart, thank you. Sincerely, Andrew Alward. So, he has moved on to bigger and better things. We're down to four, and I don't think we'll be doing a special town election, I think we'll be holding on.
In the next election, April.
The spring, yep.
Yeah, so we can.
We can wait.
It's not been the town's practice, you're, it has been the board's practice to have a special election when there's a vacancy, right? And and that's happened more than once than.
Yes.
Since I've been around. Um, and you, the town, the board has managed well with three, four members anyway, so.
Alright, so we'll have to make two. Um, do we want to go on and skip down a department since we have the chiefs here, we don't tie them up all night?
Do the budget with finance committee here, F?
We could. I just didn't want to make the chiefs wait all night, but we could do that.
Yeah.
It's up to you.
Well, they're, the chiefs might have budget.
Okay, so we're going to.
That's true.
F, uh, fiscal year twenty seven budget considerations?
Yeah.
Okay, let's do that. Anybody want to come on up?
Did, Peter, did everyone get this paper?
They did, and I sent that to Claudette, so hopefully she sent that.
I know I have it.
Okay. And folks also got the like, through August, uh, year to date results. And the budget model, the budget history summary that's used at the town meeting. That shows twenty five budget, twenty five actual, and twenty six budget. So you got sort of different sources of data.
Different modules, yeah.
Available for reference.
Is there anything here that's shocking, that we should probably highlight, yeah?
Well, I get, so, just so, I I did this work, and it's a first pass, and it's, I'm not saying it's right or good or bad or anything. What I did was I just took the main discussion lines, and you can see that there, and then where there are comments, I I increased by that amount. So some say increase like two and a half percent, increase one point seven five percent, increase two percent. So if there's nothing behind it, that means it's level funded. Um, and I thought that we should maybe take a pass at this. Cause since the override didn't pass last year, um, and so like people might say, you know. But you know, oh, I need, I'll pick on the police department since he's here. So his budget last year was seven hundred and twenty five thousand, he might say, I need nine hundred thousand dollars, and we have to be like, that is not happening. So like, we need to kind of level set with people and set the expectation that budgets are tight. Like, I, I may even, once finance committee has looked at this more thoroughly and had a meeting and discussed it. And if you want to come back, you can definitely do that. But I almost think we should go to the departments and say, this is what we're expecting to see.
It's kind of my thought at first to kind of try to get ahead of it, like this is our first proposal and why. You know, I think everyone knows why, right? But um, that way we're not scrambling last minute when they feel like they haven't had a a chance to voice their concerns or what, what challenges they might be struggling. I know. I know it's not a surprise that you have to submit your budget every year, but I also can be empathetic that they do have other things that.
Influence.
Right. It's probably not the first thing they think of every day, especially some of them, right?
But in this format, Jen, you also estimated the revenues.
Yes.
Right?
And so that's here.
Reasonably done, yeah.
Um, so property tax, so I did two and a half percent increase for the cherry sheet, you can see I put it from five ninety two to six oh four. I level funded the local receipt, so that could change too. And so that gives us seven million, six hundred forty three thousand, eight hundred eleven dollars in revenue. And with the modest increases, it puts our bu- our, this budget first pass at seven million, eight hundred sixty seven thousand, six hundred one dollars, which gives us a deficit of two hundred and twenty three thousand, seven hundred and ninety dollars. So we absolutely have that in stabilization right now to cover. So if everyone said, yep, I can live with this, like, we, we could be done. I don't think that'll happen, it won't be that easy, but I'm, so, and that is still, that's already a two hundred thousand dollar deficit. Now this, I don't know what we're going to have for free cash.
I think it's going to be less than we're used to, okay?
I think so too.
Yes.
So, that if we have an extra hundred thousand free cash, then, you know, we can add a hundred thousand back into the budget or take a hundred thousand off the deficit, like how we everywhere manage it. I guess we need to think about what's a deficit that we're all comfortable with managing too. Um, I don't think it's much bigger than two hundred and twenty three thousand, because we only have about a million. What do we have in stabilization right now? Cause we took some out, is it still a million?
It's a million, yeah.
Million.
Yeah.
Even, it used to be one point one, I think we're right at a million.
I think we're about a million.
So if we.
Yeah, and so your line items are for the department total, it isn't, you know, the salary only. So you could, you know, we know we have union contracts, for example, that we, that we have to honor, that have to.
Yeah.
Roll into those things uh, as well. Um, you have, and I mentioned at the last meeting, and we, you weren't here, Jen. You you have leadership changes coming up, which are contractual, and who knows where those wind up. Yet to be figured out, but I think what this is, is a good, a good first pass. And you know, we do, I do that uh, guidance letter that's subject to your, you know, all your input, and this would help. This type of thinking, as we progress further, will inform that guidance letter that goes out uh, early in January, right?
Yeah, like I think. Like I think we want to encourage level funding almost as much as we can. Like I know you give two percent. I think it's level funding.
Yeah, and so that's where you may be, right, on the general thing.
Said would happen.
Yeah.
We gave that warning last year.
Yep.
Yeah, and you also have, I mean, obviously the big line item is BMR. We don't know where they're gonna wind up, but you, you put a one point seven five.
They're going to wind up at three point nine million. Like, that's what we have. I mean.
You know, the others are subject to, you know, student populations and whatnot, but.
Yeah, and like, oh, I'm sorry, Peter. I'm sorry for interrupting. So you mentioned the union contract. So I did the total on the police and the fire department line items at two percent, thinking that within there, the lines could, some lines could be held, held and not increased. And then that would give a three percent, because two percent on the whole number, certainly I think would accommodate three percent on just the salaries. That's my, that was my kind of assumption there.
Did you know, on the I'm not gonna win friends, but on the, what you talked about, level funding, some of the non-contractual things? As you recall, last year, I did that last-minute thing where I took twenty-five hundred out of my pocket to put money into others just to get it from a percent and a half at least to two percent.
Yeah.
You cried. You cried for a while, you know.
No, but so I took it out of my pocket and put it into others, right? I didn't get one thank you.
I thanked you.
So, you didn't get any of it, though.
Your Mercedes didn't thank you.
Yeah, I know. That's why it's got duct tape on it. But so that's why I'm not as I'm not sticking up as much.
Okay.
It did have one on this. Jen, that bottom, the bottom one under twenty twenty-six budget line for one twenty-one eighty-seven. What is that for?
I don't have my computer with me, so I don't remember what that's for.
Okay.
I can, I can email you, Sierra.
It's, I don't know if it's just like the spacing, it's not lining up something correctly?
Just off.
Yeah, and then I, yeah, I don't know.
Yeah, I don't know what you got there.
Okay.
Oh, I think, oh, that's, I know what that is. That's the increase between twenty-six and twenty-seven. So if you take seven point, seven million, eight hundred and sixty-seven thousand, six oh one minus seven, minus last year's budget, it's a hundred and twenty-one thousand dollar increase from last year.
Okay.
How are we doing on the transportation for our out-of-district students?
It's free.
It's free.
We got none?
No, we have. We have the same, you know, same rate as last year.
Same people?
Yeah.
Be really nice to bring that back to the town.
I know, so we gotta get ahead of that.
Almost if we could do a lease agreement on a seventy van and then put it in the senior center and use their driver to bring those kids to school. That'd be great. Could save some money.
For the BMR school district budget, when do you think we'll be able to see their budget that they've given us?
For, for twenty, FY twenty-seven? Or the one that they?
Yes, sorry.
Yeah, so they typically don't have that done until February, like and there'll be a draft of it in February. They kind of.
They certify the first week in March roughly.
Yeah, so I think they may even have drafts in January and February. But I don't know what they're gonna, you know, I don't know what they're gonna look like.
And they just hired, they have a new finance director, so.
Yes.
Right, so that's good.
They're overlapping right now.
Yeah, I was wondering if we could get that just sooner so that we can cover, like look over it more.
So I think what would be.
See if there's anything we can save.
Yeah, Rachel, I'm sorry for interrupting you. I think what we could do is if we got the final twenty-six budget actually all itemized, because that would give us a good indication of how it will be for next year. So, and I think they did send that to us, did they, Peter? I don't know.
I don't know that we've seen it for twenty-six.
Okay.
I don't know that we.
So like the line items where we see teachers' salaries.
They may be happy to send it, yeah, but I haven't seen it. And are you guys doing a liaison? Like I think you're doing some liaisons this coming year, right? Already reached out to some departments and that's great. On the school, you have a liaison working. Have you figured that out yet from FinCon?
We don't actually have one for school.
That's kind of a key one that, you know, between someone from your committee working closely with the school plus me, I, you know, you typically work with the superintendent. Early on, you know, I used to meet with Jason in gripes December and January and he'd give me a a heads up about some of the challenges if nothing else. And I'm sure Jill will be, you know, quite helpful to work with as well. So I think we communicate pretty well and I think we communicate the town's needs pretty well, even just by virtue of this tonight, right? But they still have their challenges. They did have a good E and D number bigger than I think they've experienced in some time. So they were right at the five percent practically that they're limited to. So they got a million four of E and D where I think they historically run seven hundred grand, so nearly twice what they're used to, which they've often used to offset their budget, but that's not best practice. Like it's not best practice to use free cash. So their E and D might be more useful for, you know, small capital items as well as maintenance items and whatever at various buildings and so forth, so. But that's their call. It's just that they have more money in the bank leading into this budget season than they've historically had, if you will.
We're not sure if we anticipate any challenges with the new school being open and logistics in their budget.
They're still on the, you know, the the three-school plan plus, you know, nominal admin and now with the complex. I don't know whether we'll have the benefit of MES water costs reduction even further because of things happening under the grant. Right, so everything they do at this stage is essentially grant-funded, I think, right now, right now. Pretty much anything is gonna be grant-funded, subject to reimbursement, you know, some middle and reimbursement. So all the testing that we've historically paid for out of the operating budget for, at least for this foreseeable year and maybe next year, I don't know. You know, that's gonna be an interesting one to see. How we play that. Ryan?
I have no questions.
No, someone in the audience.
No, I have.
You have a question? I didn't see a hand up, sorry.
I'm not the chair. I do not make the.
No, that's all right. I just got a question. You had mentioned the school. And I just wanted to hear what number, as a percentage, I'm guessing assuming, what percentage do you put in, plug in?
Oh, for an increase?
Yeah.
One point seven five percent.
For BMR.
And how about BVT?
I level funded it.
How about your, your other schools?
Level funded.
They're all level funded.
That's gonna be difficult on the, at least on the level fund part, I can tell you that. The state's giving us all kinds of new requirements. You know, you talk about what can you do?
I mean, I don't know what to, we tried to pass a pretty modest override compared to other years.
Well, that's biased, but what I'm saying is you're in a situation where you're, when you put it together, I'll do the best I can to communicate to them, to all the people, meetings coming up all the time here, to let them know that, you know, we want to keep this thing as even as possible. I can tell you in preliminary negotiations and talking to some people with the teachers' contract, you know, it'd be even. I'd be very difficult to be, that's all I'm trying to tell you. So it'd be difficult to make that happen. And I know that there's a lot of changes, we're not gonna bore you with details on it, that the state is putting ours, we gotta do other things. So, it's gonna be difficult to do it, that's all I'm saying.
And then you got the unknown of the number of students.
You do, and you also have, and that's the bigger piece there is the one for the, you know, Lock, Aggie and any other school. Those are the ones that can come out of left field. Now, there is a new law going in, Peter, on those, is they have to have it by a certain date, middle of, I think it's February.
That would be unbelievable.
Well, no, it's, we're pushing it. Because what we do by not doing that is put you to the very last day before school starts. You can't do that to us, not us being in small towns.
Right.
So we've put in a compromise with the state, I think it was February fifteenth, that they have to have, that's it.
They have committed.
Committed, that's shut, and if it goes below that, so be it.
Yes. So not above.
Correct.
Gotcha.
So at least you know where you're gonna stand, so you're not having this take place on you, because it'll kill you. So I just want to let you know, there are some things taking place. I'll do the best I can to let them know that's what you're looking at. But that's, I'm just gonna be right.
This is just my, this is just the first pass, like, I mean, we're trying.
And then because it's the first pass and because it's the top of mind thinking, I wanted to at least give you the thinking I've got on it after going through, I've been to like three or four meetings talking about it already, because we've got negotiations with the teachers coming up as well. So, and those folks normally don't like to take a backseat, they like to go forward. So I just want to let you know where we all stand with it, right? Fair enough, thanks.
Richard, I just wanted to point out the highway street sweeping. Are we gonna see some cost savings? Because you got that sweeper now? We're hoping, we're hoping. We're trying to negotiate a deal right now to hopefully get BVT to take that over the winter and get those kids to recondition. But we did buy a street sweeper and we got a great deal on it, so. That, that becomes quite a nuisance. I believe we have to do it twice a year. It's like thirty, thirty thousand every time we do it, so it's a sixty thousand dollar savings, hopefully, hopefully, so. But again, that street sweeper will send to BVT if all goes well, so we'll see it next spring.
Zach, you want to stamp it on the side? It says, I think I can.
That's exactly what we're gonna do. We'll put something on there like make dreams come true or something. If you build it, they will come or something like that.
Keep wishing.
Keep wishing.
Deal with them a lot, you know.
Seven AM, you're gonna, you're gonna phone call tomorrow, bud. Well, you know, highway, we're always trying to come up with creative new ways to reduce costs. We're also looking at winter operations right now too. Last year, we were a hundred and twenty-five over budget. Salt, ice, we just, it was enduring. The frequency of storms was a pain. So, one of the things we're looking at doing is we've eliminated the, the wheel loader that we would rent plus the operator. And that's thirty thousand dollars. That's what it was last winter. And we're looking at a rental for a Bobcat right now and that's the invoice that you guys received. It's eleven thousand. So, salt operations is kind of like the Achilles heel. We can't get the salt in the trucks, we can't get it in the barn, then we can't do anything. So, looking to rent a machine from November first to April first for eleven thousand so that internally our staff can operate that rather than paying for a machine and an operator for the thirty that we spent last year. The other thing is, is we did get a tractor from down in Pennsylvania for brush mowing. We were able to save thirty-five thousand dollars in that, because that's annually, it's what we spend on brush mowing. So we've, we've brought that back in-house as well. And if I can eventually get some sort of a device or a truck to do culver cleaning, then potentially that might be something we can bring back in-house. We're not quite there yet, but. We're also looking at possibly doing a rental of a couple plow trucks to bring some of the subcontracted work back in, so. Got a lot of things in play. I think Diane has a copy of the new plow contract, which is getting ready for.
Haven't seen it yet, so.
Getting ready for printing and then we can all have a look at it at a later date, so. But again, so potentially sixty-five in savings between those two things. And we do have a street sweeper, again, so that's exciting.
Something, yeah.
Yeah.
We're, we're trying. We're trying, so.
And the only thing I'd add on the school committee, school budget rather, is two members of the school committee were quite vocally against the override, which is absolutely their right. And I'll be saying, you'll be hearing this a lot from me in this meeting and in their meeting. It's fine that you don't want the override, but then be like, oh, but you can't cut my budget. I still want all my money. That's not how this works.
Yeah, eventually the well goes dry.
Yes.
Yeah.
So that's fine if you don't want the override, but then expect to see it in your budget. That's not fair.
So budget questions, please. Fire, you guys anything to add?
I thought we were just gonna be talking about staffing tonight at my level, so I have some staffing comments, but.
All right, I'm not putting you on the squad.
And they haven't seen this, this is just.
We're just really early on this because we know it's going to be
Painful.
The worst experience of our lives.
It's gonna be tough.
Because.
It'll be tough for everybody, Jared, not just you.
Yeah.
It won't be just, it won't be just you.
It'll be everybody.
It will be everyone. But you can't make it tough for everyone and then think, oh, it's not gonna be tough for me.
Yeah.
I don't have anything else on that.
Jen, like I said, just wanted to get the discussions going early because it's gonna be.
It comes up very, very quickly, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
When do we usually get the free cash? When do you think we'll have it this year?
The number?
Good question.
It is a good question.
We get it, end of March if we're good.
So in twenty-four, we had it like March first.
I don't know, yeah, we.
I think we had a hangup last year if I recall.
We had a bit of a hangup, yes.
So there's still things with the previous Justin Cole, the town accountant, who serves time for his involvement with Millville, they're still finding stuff. And so it's a struggle. So, but I think now that that's not, I think it will go better this year.
Yes, they are ahead of where they were previously on the critical things which are capturing the revenue for a fiscal year and doing bank records, some kind of common stuff. So that's in process.
So they've already started?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, great.
Been like working, communicating too, to try to learn and be as helpful as she can to try to help us get that number sooner too.
That's amazing. That's so helpful. Thank you so much.
Could you just refresh my memory on that number last year, the free cash number?
I have it.
Four hundred, if you have it, I know.
I have, the starting point was three hundred sixty-two.
So I think we landed at.
And then we moved, we moved one, two, three, about three hundred thousand into it from other.
Fantasy that it might be less this year?
It might be less. The only thing is that if you remember, the, the D L, D O R, D L S folks couldn't, they would have gone for a four eighty-five number, but they went to the three sixty number. So there might be some benefit of that. But what I don't know is whether we're gonna get whacked for, for example, chapter ninety funding reimbursement for that truck. I think that's gone in
Yep.
After year end, and so when they count that as a hit to free cash or include it. I, I think there's a, like September thirtieth, I think we're still good. Likewise, the playground, the money came in, but it was after year end. Hopefully that won't be a hit against free cash. It's that sort of thing that could, those are decent-sized numbers that could hurt us.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think that chapter ninety funding came in until after the close of the fiscal year.
Correct, that's what I'm saying, yeah. But they, they sometimes claw it back for free cash determination. But not beyond a certain point.
Those are big numbers.
Yeah. But otherwise, I don't think we're gonna see big excess of revenues over what was projected. We're not seeing that for FY twenty-five. And we're not seeing a lot of turnbacks for FY twenty-five, which you see in this thing, right, if you look at it, so. There's some, but not a lot, so.
Some of the costs that we had for the water part of it though, were not reoccurring for the next fiscal year, correct?
Yeah, but that won't in fact, impact free cash, right?
I understand, I'm just saying that that should give us more.
So we, but we did reduce the budget for FY twenty-six for MES water from what the typical run rate was, okay? In anticipation of the fact that the grant would cover a lot of the regular testing as well. So we already baked that in. To the extent we can include more in the grant, we're gonna do every bit that we can. Right, and it's a reimbursable thing, so they would review and approve and write us a check if you are to transfer the money.
So regards with the highway invoice, did anybody have any comments, concerns, questions about that? Are we comfortable with that? That's just the rental between November first and April first.
Okay, well, I mean, if we don't do, if we don't do this, then what happens?
Well, we, so we've got a front-end loader. The problem with it is if we don't. Well, um we, so we've got a front-end loader, the problem with it is if we don't, if it breaks, then we can't get salt on the roads and then we're kinda shut down. It's kinda like the Achilles heel will be a little operation.
Yeah, and Richard and I talked a little bit, remember back when you were chair of capital committee?
Yeah.
And we bought the front-end loader was to displace that outsourced resource, but we never displaced the outsourced resource. Because it's needed in part because of breakdowns, but also it was more agile at getting at the salt. Is how I would describe it. And so this gets rid of that outsourced provider at the thirty-five beans.
Okay, so this is a better price.
So it's a better deal.
We're limiting the thirty thousand, bringing this back in-house.
Okay.
So there's twenty in savings there.
Yup.
And then, of course, you're you're mowing, we bought the tractor for seventy-five hundred. And we've saved that thirty-five thousand, so split the difference there.
And and Richard's even talking, I think, Richard, for, I don't mean to take words out of your mouth or you speak for you, but. You're also planning to use this thing for sidewalk plowing as opposed to outsourcing that.
So the same thing, yeah, that that would save us, you know, like eighty dollars an hour for sidewalk clearing. But the only, the only catch there is we have to buy. Well, we'll have to, we'll have to buy a snow blower for it, and that's fine, we can do it. So after the salt operations is done, the storm's concluded, we would then switch over to sidewalk clearing. So that personnel could then, you know, take care of that and save us eighty dollars an hour or so. And we'd be paying the special municipal rate of eighteen bucks an hour.
Yeah.
So.
So if we don't do this, we can't salt the roads, and in Millville, when it snows, that's important.
Just stay home till it melts.
And there's a potential for, right, and there's a potential for further savings, so yeah, we'll have to just close the roads down and nobody goes to roads.
That important.
Yeah, that's right.
So do you need us to vote? I mean, this is fine.
I don't think so.
Okay.
I just wanted to make everybody aware of it. In that we're trying to bring some savings back into the town, so. So.
Finance committee?
What's that? They can go home if they'd like. Do you wanna go home? Unless the chiefs have any questions, but your guys are good. Okay.
We're gonna catch up, yeah.
They like money also.
Yeah. Alright.
Alright, thank you.
Alright, thank you very much. Do we want to? Do you wanna skip over, I mean, I I don't know, I just feel bad, the chiefs have been sitting here all night.
Yeah, sure, we can do the chiefs next.
Chief Coop, do you wanna come on up? I don't wanna hold you all night, but you wanna talk about your staffing issues?
It's only seven thirty, seven forty.
Well, I don't know, I don't know what time he got to work this morning, so.
That's true too, but no, we can do them next, we can skip the Halloween and all stuff, we can do that later.
Wrap that up, yeah.
Yeah, that's gonna be a quick update anyways.
Good evening.
Good evening. So formal.
You mean? I mean, uh.
It's a professional.
I'm trying to. I'm, I have to be serious about my needs over there, and we've got some issues right now, so.
Oh, no.
So uh. Officer Gould uh attended his resignation in July, he'll be completely off the books. The middle of next month. So pretty substantial gap as my day shift partner and the uh accredited and trained SRO. I'm gonna end up taking the class myself, so I can be most up to date on all the classes, and then as the certified SRO, it'll. Cover the town in a position that's through post, you know? And plus I'm working day shift. So, but in the meantime, um Blackstone has been gracious to offer the assistance of Joe Nemzik, the SRO. To help us.
That's very nice.
Get through it. And uh we've worked out some supplemental. The school department has a budget for some supplemental help in the form of detail losses in the school, so. We're using that sparingly. At the Millville Elementary.
So forgive me, he was um, what was his rank in your department? He's just the SRO, he'd fill the day shift?
Yes.
Okay. I was just trying to get an understanding.
Oh, yeah. That's why I have to, I mean, I could force a guy, say, a third shift, a second shift, but. They don't wanna do it, and I have to force them, now I have to find people to work those late shifts, so. Right now, I'm working about twenty hours a week by myself on the day shift. So that means I'm handling calls and. So uh.
It's fun.
Yeah, it's not working out, so. We also had uh Tom Reynolds, a long time part-timer, over ten years. He uh. Just uh, he aged out from his fired apartment job as well.
I saw that.
He's been uh, he had been working with us over ten years and, you know. Around six, seven, eight shifts a month sometimes. Uh that's a big loss also, you think about losing a full-timer too, Scott, that's twenty shifts a month. So, and and an SRO court officer, a lot of stuff he was doing, so that's, that's a big hole to fill.
So do you anticipate filling the the full-time position, which is filled by Officer Gould, right? Is he, is he full-time?
Right.
I'm sorry.
I have some potential on my list, yeah, I was just trying to stay in order.
Sorry, no, alright, I wanna ask questions, sorry.
So um. I just gotta say though, the remaining staff right now really stepped up to the challenge, you know, I I've got a lot of. We've got a little bit of adversity right now, but I've had a lot of creativity with guys stepping up and and filling, as they always do. We we have uh, we recently hired two part-timers, they're both in FTO. And lucky for us, we've had some pretty serious uh, you know, whether or not. Maybe not for a big city, but for around here, some stuff's going on, so they've had some good field training experience, uh. We had a day last week where one of the part-timers was in with us, and we have five calls to service in a shift, so I mean, don't sound like a lot, but around here.
Lot for us, yeah.
It is a lot, you know, so it's good for training and different things they've been seeing recently, so that's been going good. The uh. We we have a um pretty positive opportunity with the two new full-timers that we could.
Part-timers.
A part-timers, excuse me, part-timers, that we could potentially have a full-time opportunity. With one of both of them in the future, but we're gonna try and, we're gonna try and get them through field training and make sure they were both uh. College cops at a, at a pretty decent, some violence and drugs and booze and mental health and stuff. I wouldn't wanna name the place, but, so they saw a wide variety of stuff, so we were pretty positive during their interviews on that, so. So we'll see what happens with them. One thing, I mean, and I, I almost, I almost wanted to say something from the finance committee, but. We're almost at the end of our rope as far as trying to find part-timers now. We're we're coming to where we're gonna have to make a decision on sending somebody to an academy. There's just, there is. In twenty twenty-seven, the beginning of the year, anything to do with the Bridge Academy, whatever.
Over.
Post is got, like, it's it's all done, they're not, if you, if you, the only, the only people out there are people that need hours now. We don't have, we have the um process open all the time, we just don't have. You know, for various reasons, we've discussed the reasons why we're not getting people knocking down the store over here, so, you know, and and that's.
We tried.
I I hate to say it, but I'm gonna be coming hard for some help this year, and you know, it's, it just has to be. I wish I had done a little more on this, but we've had a little bit of a busy week last week, and I just didn't get a chance, but. If I gotta send somebody to the academy, between paying their pay benefits, uniforms, you gotta pay their insurance if we sponsor them. I think roughly we're looking a little over sixty thousand with all the fees, the equipment and everything. And then we have to figure out a way to pay that sixty thousand, get them through an academy and hope that another chief.
Doesn't scoop them.
Doesn't scoop them. I I was talking with a chief the other day, it's not a nearby town, but um he said he's struggling. Because he, and he's a forty-man police department.
Oh, man.
And he's struggling because two dollars down, they're offering a ten thousand dollar hiring bonus paid in twenty-five hundred increments. Over two and a half years, so. That's what even a forty-five man department is struggling to hire people, so.
Even with the recession coming, that's kinda crazy. I mean, we're headed for a full-on recession, that's an economics.
What do you mean?
I don't wanna speak anything out loud.
Yeah, no, they're not, no, they're projecting that there's a, you know, a big economic slowdown coming. So I'd be surprised if that ten thousand dollar bonus stays long.
Wouldn't, I I, it's gonna stay there, I mean, they, that particular town is a little bigger and they need people, so.
Will you be able to pay the sixty thousand, that fee out of stabilization, it's a one-time cost?
No, it it would be uniforms, it would be their healthcare, we have to insure them.
So that's, but that sixty thousand, the academy is not a one-time, and then they roll on to the.
Six thousand for the academy, they just raised the price.
Oh, like they're just in sixty thousand?
No, well, because we have to, we have to pay them if we sponsor them.
Yup.
So that's like a thousand.
Yeah, but how do we do on that? Stabilization?
I I've never sent anybody, but it's around twenty-four to twenty-six weeks.
Oh.
So sixty beans for half a year, roughly.
Twenty-six weeks.
And then hopefully he comes on, so you still have to have him budgeted in there for the re- the remaining balance of that year, for example.
And that's for six months that we don't have anybody.
And you don't have, so you either are doing overtime or you got other staffing and whatnot to fill those shifts.
I'm saying, for the six-month wise in the academy, if we pay that out of either general or public safety stabilization, just to kinda ease your budget a bit, cause there is money in those accounts. And then when they finish and then we roll them on, now I wouldn't mind also going dipping into stabilization for a little bit of a bonus, but I don't want the people that are there already to feel neglected either, so we'd probably have to do something for everybody in our. And now, and if we do it for the police department, then the fire department's gonna feel left out, we don't want them to feel left out.
So.
I was just telling you of a conversation, it's it's, and it's not too far from here, you know, but it's. A forty-five and a sixty-person police department, and and they're struggling too, so, so, you know, and.
So so I think though, what, I mean, a couple of things I'm hearing, right, the things I know. Cause I deal with them frequently. First of all, he's doing at least three patrol shifts a week, the chief of police of Millville is doing three patrol shifts a week. In addition to all the chief duties that he has to do.
Unusual.
Right, so if you think of him as a battery, he's never, he's, he's discharging and he never gets charged fully, and he discharges, he never. So I worry that he's wearing out, that's just me working with him, so, and he is wearing out, so there's that. But I think the fundamental thing is, is a recruitment. Effort that's successful. And and we need to figure that out, and what you were just suggesting is something he may not have thought of before, nor have any of us. But it's, it's a thing that might help solve the problem, and as we think back, we did put in some recruitment retention.
Yeah, we did.
Stuff.
Before.
That uh, I I don't know if it expired, or it still is in place, isn't it?
There's a couple more guys that completed their obligations to the state and they're getting.
Okay, so that's, the board always had the right to change their mind on that, but so it's still in place, yes? And so that might be worth a look at to see whether that's. Appropriate in current situations as a supplement to the effort to recruit, that's all I'm saying. In in addition to what Jen's talking about, if you have to go that route, but the the real crux is you you still could lose the guy, and so you've you.
You pay all that money because.
Spit it away in the wind.
And and what what I have seen, we'll get, the Chiefs Association will throw out an email blast for, say, a specific. Um academy campus, oh, we have uh twenty-five recruits. Within a half hour.
They're gone.
Sometimes an hour, another email goes out and says, we have everybody committed. So that's, so that's, that's gone to like ninety chiefs in our specific group, and within like an hour, they they just.
They gobble them up.
So I think it just goes to show the the issues out there across the state.
Question, Sheriff's Department, so they post certified, they have like a law enforcement division, don't they?
So uh, I I wouldn't wanna, I, we we interviewed uh someone recently, and um, you know, he hadn't. There's, I guess there's a different rationale between them and police officers when they're doing a certification, cause. I I've had some conversations at the state level about this thing and they're working on it, but. We had a guy that admitted right in the interview, he hadn't done an arrest in like nine years, so. I told him, you're gonna need a full-time academy, I, we we, we can't, we can't manage somebody that doesn't, like, doesn't have. Any experience, you know what I mean, we try to work with somebody that's got recent experience, but for us, the the, he needs a full-time, and he wasn't shy about recognizing that he probably did. So, I wouldn't name that office either, but I ju- I think it's, that's kind of what I've heard from the state that happens in that particular certification.
Is there possible scholarships or awards um to send people to the police academy?
I've never heard.
Help us with the budget?
I've never, I've never heard.
Twenty years ago there was, the that federal funding dried up.
I I tried to uh, I tried to do a personnel grant last year, and. Unfortunately, we would not have been telling the truth if we completed that grant, so I stopped doing the paperwork on it, there was a lot of things that. You know, we had to be getting adequate funding from the town and, you know, and 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 we, you know, we've been cutting, so I just.
Yeah, with grants, you have to be funded on the front side of the budget in order to apply for reimbursement, so.
Yeah.
But with scholarships and things of that nature, years ago, there used to be a uh, an organization with the federal government that handed out money to to recruits to join local. PDs, and then they would get, you know, free tuition and stuff like that, but it was all around like early two thousand. So it's all kinda gone now.
I just, two things, one observation is that it sounds like on an onboarding situation, that's an issue. Guys get snapped up before they even, the phone was hung up. Um the other situation was um, what are you thinking if you do get someone on board, how do you keep them here for a period of time? And you mentioned something about where they were gonna give a guy a certain amount of money for two and a half years or something like that. Is that, is that a logical way of doing it, is that what other chiefs have done now?
I think, I think from my conversation with that particular chief, which was totally unrelated, it just morphed into that because of his geographic location. I I don't think it's just that hiring bonus, I think that other town is also paying very well too, I think their base salary. After two years was almost a hundred thousand for a patrol officer, so.
Wow.
I I.
That's almost a double, right, for here?
Um, not, not quite, I mean.
One and a half.
What I'm asking.
But they had, they have, they're a miniature city too, at fifty people.
He said it was a forty-eight member of department or something like that, we, you know, you're.
Yeah, true, true.
But the 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 thing I'm looking at is, we get some brains here, what do we, is there any way we can think of having some sort of hook on it? Where we can keep someone, that the longer they stay, that things.
So we, like I said.
We did that.
Did have a recruitment and retention bonus, it is in place today, it does merit looking at it again with a fresh set of eyes. In light of today's circumstances, to see whether it needs to be sweetened.
Other towns are doing, cause it sounds from what the chief's saying, this isn't unique to just go all over.
It's everywhere.
Everywhere, so if it's everywhere, there's gonna be a lot of brain power being put out, trying to figure out how do we, if we get this guy. I I think I I'm less inclined to be, have a problem if it costs us to get a well-trained officer. I'm less, I'm less problematic with that than I am if we get, and he's there for six months and he boots it, that that just aggravates me.
We we have the same problem even also at Metacomet, getting dispatchers, right? And it's not just Metacomet, it's dispatchers in the state of Massachusetts, everywhere, and you can keep raising the rates. And and it's, it's, a factor is that it's not a, even police today, for young people, is not necessarily the career path. They're anxious to go down, that's part of it, and that that gets into what's the world like these days and all that stuff, so. We're fighting that battle at the same time, I think, that's my take uh from sitting here for a long time.
Chief with the, anything up at the safety, um that they looked at up at BBT of some of the programs they wanna start up there or have started up there. Um they had first class actually. Um, they had first class actually last January, uh, graduated, of, uh, students that came in that were doing, um, that type of, of work. Not police officer work per se, but work that was-
Criminal justice, you mean?
So you, you get, yeah, and get them in early, get them interested, get them to know who we are and say, "You know, I really like this town." And see if we can't, there's gotta be something more than just a dollar bill in someone's nose. Dollar bills don't do it. And I know it doesn't, you gotta have so many to be, survive, but the same timeframe, you've gotta have some other things that make the person want to be able to work with us.
So, I, I can, like, a, a police department within twenty miles of us, without naming any names, in a one-month period, lost three offices to other departments and three to the civilian side. So I think that, I think there's bigger challenges and, like, I, I understand what you're saying, trying to get somebody interested, but the amount of time it would take to, like, try to mold somebody from just getting out of high school, when I can't even hire them till twenty-one as a police officer. I'm trying to find what I can find that's, you know, stocked out there.
I'm trying to dig up, anything I can figure out, if you get some kids that are interested or some ladies that are interested, you may be able to come up with poorer with once in a while, that's all I'm suggesting. And if they're already spending their time in their career in their nine-hundred hours against criminal justice, they've made a commitment. You get nine-hundred hours, they're committing to criminal justice, and you're telling me, what, that they're gonna step out and become, do something? Sounds like you may have at least something to look at there. I'm just trying to come up with anything, because I, I can't, it just drives me crazy when I hear that they, they leave after six months, that, that just kills me.
We could do more, we could dip into stabilization for retention bonuses as well. I mean, I'm not big on spending stabilization money in this way, but like, if we don't have police officers, I feel like that's a big deal.
Why else do you have it if it's not for stabilization? If you don't have, what's the sense? You know, you have a fire, but you don't have any firing, great.
So when you're frozen, taking like, you know, sixty grand?
So sixty, sixty for the six months and then another ten that we put in and he gets that, or whatever it is. Over, over a period of time, you can give him.
Just remember, I'm not contemplating that right this second, but that's, that's gonna be our future move. I mean, I don't, I don't see that there's gonna be any more trying to hire part-timers, I mean.
On, on the plus side though, I will say that the, the, the folks you have on the, in the department are loyal, dedicated, and very good at community policing. And, you know, it's a nice community to work in, it's a nice department to work in, and so it isn't always all about the money. So part of it is getting someone in the door to experience the Millville police way and say, "You know, I kinda like this, it's a nice life." That, that's hard to do, but it.
It takes, it's a culture, you gotta develop it, and cultures take a lot. It gotta be consistent to be a culture.
So what do you think we?
I have a quick question about the, um, school resource officer certification. Do you know how much that costs and how long it takes?
It's a, a five-day class, a couple of two-day classes. Uh, doesn't, uh, well, it only will cost my time to go there. It comes through, uh, the municipal police training committee, because it's a post requirement, so.
Okay, so, um, the prior resource officer had retired quite a few months ago. Is there a reason why somebody didn't kinda step up to the plate and get certified before the beginning of the school year?
Because they didn't have any classes, I've been in constant communication, they're talking about getting classes going in November. So, uh, I.
So there are no classes available?
I can certainly get back to you with the email dates that I've been speaking to them back, but they asked for all chiefs to report in on, uh, SRO necessity and I did that immediately, so. So I actually just had a conversation with a lady at MPTC today as well, and she's gonna try and give me a heads up, 'cause she's doing that for a couple of the smaller towns.
And there was short notice on the retirement, right?
So none of the other guys wanted to be an SRO?
My last thing is, I'm sorry.
I was saying, none of the other guys wanted to be an SRO?
Well, if they did, that would be tough, because I'd have to take them off a night shift or an overnight shift. I think it's a blessing that they didn't wanna do it, because then we'd have an issue filling those shifts.
Well, I was just thinking that maybe they could help you out if the, the shifts, uh, didn't coincide as the same shift, I don't know. If you got somebody working midnight to eight, you know, eight o'clock, they could, or they'll leave the shift early and head over to the school, right?
That'd be terrible.
But I'd have to, I'd have to pay them overtime.
No, I'm not saying to four, but I mean, they could do the morning, you know, split it in half, you know?
Well, then I'd have to pay them overtime for that.
But it may be beneficial, because in case the chief gets sick, um, and unfortunately can't fill in those hours, there's a backup, so somebody could shift their schedule and then we're not paying like Blackstone to cover for us in that case.
We're not paying Blackstone, that's, they're part of the school district, so, uh, they've agreed to help.
Or MES?
Yeah.
Yes.
And those two new guys are full academy certified, so.
Correct.
We could hire either one of those right now to fill in a full-time shift.
No, they're in field training right now, we couldn't do that right now.
How, how much longer is FTO time? I don't, I'm just asking.
That's a very, that's, it's training at part-time level, I, I wouldn't even be comfortable answering that question right now. I mean, I gotta see where they're at.
But there is near-term opportunity for one or more, both, one or possibly both, to shift into full-time mode.
Sure, I agree with that a hundred percent. But I, like, we're, we're talking about, we're talking about, uh, I don't know, four days of training so far, I couldn't.
Yeah, it's early in the training cycle.
I, I just think something I see, they, they have a good work and knowledge of certain protocols and stuff.
Would you have been able to hire them full-time if you were thinking that way?
I mean, it's a, there is some stuff that you have to convert from, uh, from like college to municipal, so, uh, yeah.
You weren't, you weren't comfortable that.
It wasn't what they wanted at the moment either, so.
Thank you for sharing.
It's all, it's all my notes right, and this is a black pen, so I had that previously, so.
Have to make a movie, it's in fast time at Millville Elementary. Who's gonna play Mr. Hand?
Mr. Hanky.
All right.
And I don't, like, I, I think the best option is for me to go to the school right now if we don't have a certified SRO in a timely manner and somebody that's working the day shift. Like, I'm not gonna be going there all day, that's not, that's not the purpose over there, but we do get supported by the, the school district with their line item for that as well. So I don't know how long that will last, we didn't have the school here last year, so I don't have that knowledge, but. I'll use that line item as long as I can and then, uh, I'll be involved with the school and, uh, I'll get the knowledge of what an SRO's, uh, duties are and also responsibilities and stuff, so I can pass that on to the other officers.
Sounds like fun, kinda like kindergarten club, right? Questions?
It's not a tumor.
Who is your daddy and what does he do?
Sorry, I quote movies way too much and, yeah.
All right, I, I have no questions.
I know, I mean, we have all the information that I-
Thank you.
I don't know what else we can do.
Take money on a stabilization to help, I guess.
That's the only thing I can think of.
Throw money at people.
I mean, uh, if I'd known the conversation was gonna turn that way, I would've tried to be more prepared, but. Had, uh, I thought it was just a quick staffing update, so.
Yeah, it's fine, all right.
We have many more selectmen meetings that you can come to and participate on the budget, don't worry.
Like the, meet with the finance committee for us, so I can come here with a more educated.
Yeah.
You might even get a cruiser out of him, I don't know.
He's due, and we promised, we promised.
I'd want a tank, but okay. We're good, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next victim. How you doing, sir?
Good evening.
Long time no see.
Yes.
All right, so I wasn't sure entirely what you guys were looking for tonight, it was really vague, so. Uh, as far as staffing goes, it's, you know, kinda status quo. Um, I know with the override not passing, we talked about some, uh, what that budget would've looked like, some cuts, but the grace of getting some of that extra money put back into the, the call firefighter EMP line item, thank you, Peter.
Finance committee voters.
The finance committee. We were able to, well, I took and allocated that to focus on keeping our EMS coverage for the call EMS side as it was. So we weren't gonna go down with that, which is now kinda where we are at now. We've been doing fairly, fairly well with covering shifts, um, due to kind of the core group of probably about five guys, guys that are showing up and stepping up to the plate and taking the shifts. The staffing level right now, we're at, looking at fifteen members, um, the mix of seven EMTs, eight first responders, slash firefighters or just, uh, first responders. It's almost the same number you had before. Yeah, uh, we did add some be, in the spring, uh, we've let some go, that just. Didn't pan out? They weren't showing up for anything, um, even had some issues just trying to get people to go down to the town hall to fill out the paperwork. To, and to be able to get paid, so it's like, I think we're in the same boat as, you know, it's kinda all departments. Fire departments from surrounding towns throughout the state, even other, you know, police departments, public safety. You know, you, you get people to come in, interview, and, okay, you think they're gonna be, they talk a good game and they just don't hold up there under the bargain to actually, you know, show up, so. Unfortunately, it's kind of the nature of the beast with, especially with call, call, fire and EMS. Again, if the two full-time staff step up to the plate big time. We're, so we are currently doing the Monday through Friday with the full-time staff, covering seven to three. The call EMS shift on the nights and weekends starts at six, goes to six in the morning. So we do have that uncovered from, uh, three to six in the afternoon. Uh, and again, like I said, the full-time staff, luckily, they've, they've been able to step up when the call comes in at that time. We just had one this afternoon, right, right at four. Um, one of the full-time members happened to be at the station talking to me and we were able to go to the call, another one came back, so I could, to take over the call, so I could get here to the meeting, so. Like I said, I can't say enough about their work and, uh, some of the core group of the guys that are showing up to every call, taking those EMS shifts, really making everything work.
Yeah, and there's always two on, it seems, right? When you have those EMS shifts overnight, there's two available, which is great. Yeah, so, yeah, it's really your three to six in the afternoon.
Yeah.
Not having coverage, right? Except for if they're available and fill in on a call, that sort of thing. And maybe generates a little overtime for the full-time guys and whatnot, right? And you have six to six and six to six, you get twenty-four hour.
For the weekend shift.
On the weekends, see? And that's at the, you know, the hundred bucks. Which is in negotiation.
Three to six Monday through Friday is uncovered.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
So there's a fair, there's pretty good coverage when you boil it all down, but it is just a handful.
Right, I don't, I can't tell you how long that's gonna last with those guys, but.
Right.
Yeah, I'm definitely thankful for the hard work and all they're doing to step up for the town, so. Okay.
Again, we tried for the over.
Oh, yeah, no.
We tried and then, but it just didn't pass and then, this is a consequence, which we discussed and I'm glad Sierra pointed that out as well, like, we told people next year it's going to be tighter.
Yes.
Correct, yeah. So, part of the benefit of doing the, the civil audit through the Audit General, and Peter and I have, um, had the luxury of meeting, uh, Ms. Ziglio, is that her name?
Yeah, yeah, Diane Ziglio, we'll be-
Speaking with her again Wednesday, um, they've, they've been very nice. And we're hoping to get a document together that may work in your favor to say, "Hey, listen, here are some deficiencies." I'm, I'm sure they'll talk to you at some point and they'll say, you know, "Here's what the fire department needs and here are some improvements." So that might be something that'll come out of all that, so. Hoping to document something that the, the voters can read and, you know, if we go back to an override, might be an override, you never know.
Right.
But I need something on, in paper and, um, I, do we have a?
So we don't, we still don't have, like, I think our meeting Wednesday is further, to further discuss the scope of the work, because they were gonna provide us a, like I call it, a document request, they haven't done that yet. I sent them some information to help them.
Sure.
Figure that out better. But other towns have, like, we're doing this audit, have the audit come in, 'cause we're also dealing with issues between us and another town, right? But otherwise, other towns have had like, uh, MRI or one of those guys come in and do those studies of the departments and, you know, that's a twenty-grand consulting cost, uh, at a minimum, I think, to do that and, you know, they, they go through it. That's not what we're doing here right now.
Yeah, yeah, well, at least they can highlight some possible improvements, because they're looking at not just budget, procedural, policy, practices, common practices, um, so. Um, quick question, I, not, not throwing, it was not a gotcha moment, but I know that, um, a couple of guys did reach out and they're asking about promotional practices, so just something to think about, some of the guys were asking, you know, "How, how does somebody make lieutenant?" And how does somebody make different ranks, um, are those things posted? How are you?
They, they could be posted or they could just be an internal promotion based on, on how I wanna do it.
Okay, so some of the guys did, did raise that, I just wanted to let you know, be transparent, so, just wanted to flag for your attention, so.
Yeah, I'm, first I'm hearing about it.
Yeah, all right, no, no, no problem. Questions, concerns, complaints? How are we looking at budget-wise?
Um, I have a quick question.
Wasn't I saying that the last thing, the two thirty-eight that, uh, we'd had in collection, do we have an update on that, or do we know?
Nothing definitive yet, all.
But of that two thirty-eight, a long time ago, that was marked down or written down to like one oh seven or something, right? They wrote it down.
My understanding is that, yes, and then some-
And then it's in collection.
Some debt can also be written off, given the, the chief's permission, he has to grant them permission that he can do that. But I just wanted an update on the two thirty-eight, what's been collected, what's new coming in? It's a revolving door, so it's always gonna have a balance.
I think a, a new report should be coming out shortly, um, and I'll, I'll get, I'll get that for you.
Rachel, sorry.
That time out too?
Yes.
It times out, doesn't it?
Well, some of it, well, I, I would, I would argue probably no, Peter will probably say yes. I don't think either of us really have a strong understanding of how it works. My understanding is that that debt only times out if a chief gives permission.
It's not automatic.
Well, you say seven years and it might fall off, but, um, I don't know, I've, I've seen some folks with debt and they've had it a lot longer and it sticks, 'cause it lands right in your credit report, so.
Great, even better.
And it continually reports, so.
I'm just saying, the thing will time out if it's seven years, you know, the thing will just keep walking until the point it's.
It's just gone, yeah, no, I don't, I don't believe it works exactly like that, but again, I don't know, we're not in the weeds with it, so. Unless you can clarify it, I don't know.
Yeah, I'll, I'll reach out to Comstar.
Yeah, can we find out all that, just to see if that's the case?
But again, a bunch was sent to collection and they wrote, so the current, the last current balance I saw was not two thirty-eight, it was a hundred and seven grand, something like that.
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, I, I would like to, I mean, I would think that the Board of Selectmen, given that it has some financial jurisdiction, would have the authority to say yes or no to writing some of that debt off. I mean, I understand the chief can give some waivers, but I mean.
That's a policy.
I would think that you would be informed, I mean, I'd hate to say, "Oh yeah, a hundred grand's gone, 'cause it's seven years old." We're just not collecting anymore, forget it, it's gone, doesn't exist.
Wait long enough, whatever, a hundred.
Wait long enough, nobody pays their bill, forget it, you know? Yeah, no, I agree with you, I'm sorry, Rachel.
No, it's okay, um, so I was wondering if you knew like a rust, rough estimate about, um, the percentage of, like, out-town calls for EMS to other towns? And how much of those calls may fall between the three to six, um- And how much of those calls may fall between the three to six P M hours that can't be picked up there?
So you're you're asking how many times we provide mutual aid out of town? Or.
No, other towns have provided mutual aid for us.
Yeah, I didn't prepare those numbers, but I can definitely go through the and get those numbers for you.
Thank you.
Do you have like a general idea though? I'm just curious.
No, not off the top of my head.
I mean, you said even recently, there was a call that came at four and we covered it. So it seems like we're not always requesting mutual aid, even between three and six.
Right.
So, but we just need to figure out is it eighty percent of the time, twenty percent of the time, fifty fifty?
Yeah, to give a to give an accurate number, I'll have to go down the breakdown of to see when we've had mutually come in and what what the time timeframe was, what and what the circumstances was, was our ambulance out and that's why they came in or did we just not have anybody on the call back through staffing?
But separately, it's also the A L S call, so.
Right.
In addition, right? So it's it's mutual aid because we couldn't cover it. And for B L S services and or it's A L S and we need the A L S call.
Right.
Help.
Then there's all that whole messiness with who's paying the bill and then who's collecting the insurance.
That's right.
That's still a big unknown. All right, I have nothing else, anybody have any other questions? And go home, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Roy.
Do we want to move on to the Halloween update?
Sure. Um, so we've scheduled it for.
The eighteenth.
Yeah, October eighteenth, sorry, I was doing some math in my head. Um, we had a meeting a couple of weeks ago, we have another meeting September twenty-second at six at the library. I did see in my emails in the packet that Pat Finn said that they weren't notified, so I did not copy Pat Finn on the emails, but I did copy.
Tina, she's part of it, right?
Yeah, so I'm if I should copy Pat as well, maybe I'll make that best practice.
Well, we should, she's the secretary, so we get, that was just a mist between A to B.
Yeah.
That's that's all it came down to, it's just a miss.
So I can add Pat Finn to the email, whenever I email Tina, I'll email Pat.
Yeah, that'll that'll allow the secretary then to be able to use that whenever they have a meeting, which is once a month.
Yeah.
And here's your schedule, Jen, right there.
Oh, yeah, I saw that too.
You have that, okay.
So it's like one o'clock, we're going to have something at the storytime at the library, two to four will be something at the police station playground. And then four to six, the trunk or treat at the senior center. And then, so that's what we agreed to last time, on the twenty-second will be final, final, just in case someone needed to move. Because Tina did say when I emailed her that she was ninety percent, she seemed fairly certain she would the trunk or treat because they originally had it on the twenty-fifth.
No, I saw postings that it's the eighteenth.
Eighteenth, now perfect.
Time frame.
Great, so we'll have one day of fun Halloween stuff. If anyone else wants to participate, please come to the meeting on September twenty-second at six P M and you can always email me selectmanthree@milvillema.org.
Cool. Consideration of a special fall town meeting.
We need a special.
So I was approached by some folks that have some language in zoning bylaws that need to be cleaned up. So they're requesting a special fall meeting.
Just for that?
Well, so I I spoke to the planner on that today, right? So they have zoning bylaw changes, right, that they, if there's a special town meeting in the fall, they want to be sure they're including that. But we give out the notice that send in your, you know, Warren article request form and fill that in. They would otherwise postpone it, according to the planner, to the A T M as they've done in the past.
I was potentially thinking of it, but it sounds like we don't need it in terms of the enterprise agreement because a lot more math needs to be done, so.
Yeah.
You know?
Yeah, I think, and I don't know of bills of a prior year that are of any significance. The the only and no other real burning issues. The only thing might be whether we see that budgets are somehow going crazy between now and the middle of October, yeah, and the next month.
Yeah.
And and therefore need to supplement a budget.
Yeah. Well, my thinking was winter operations, but, you know, I think if we keep picking our way at it, we should be okay.
And that's snow and ice anyway, so you can deficit spend.
But I don't, see, I see, I was trying to avoid that. I'd like to pass some savings, I know.
I I understand, but you you don't have to have a town meeting to supplement that budget, that's the point, I guess.
Well, the idea I was thinking is that if there was a key piece of equipment that we could potentially.
Oh, a capital item, yes.
Capital item. I was thinking that that might be the form to do it on or a rental agreement or lease agreement, the rent surprise to help alleviate some of those costs. That's kind of what I was thinking of, I think we're going to be okay. Because I think this answers some of the mail that we had.
Yes, the the chair of the capital committee, the reluctant chair of the capital committee.
Handsome fellow.
Could could send out an email to all department heads, just say, do you anticipate any capital needs that would require, you know, between, prior to annual town meeting? Something, I'll come up with the right wording, the point is to see if anybody really has an urgent need for a piece of equipment, right?
I think I think it'd be okay, though.
Including the, I don't know what B M R's plan is for when they will come to the town, but it's my understanding that it might be before town meeting, annual town meeting. So sometime between, but not in the fall, right? That they might bring forward some.
Springtime.
Request in the springtime, but before your town meeting. And you have to act within forty-five or sixty days or whatever it is, the Board of Selectmen to.
So we're thinking by law will be springtime?
Yeah, I think so.
Yeah.
I mean, would it really be worth any of the time or money just for a special town meeting that may have three or four things on it, tops? I don't, I don't see it.
And that's you, you get to decide that, but the capital committee and the capital committee would be reluctant to just bring forward a couple of items that obviously, there's nothing urgent that I know of.
Yeah, it'd only be if it was some sort of urgent thing and the only thing I could think of is if there was, you know, the urgent thing would be around weather, like snow.
Right.
Things, so like, oh, my God, we have no power.
Probably just kind of early, yeah.
Whatever it is.
You really don't hit that until mid-January.
Right.
Unless you get a hurricane.
Right, so you're probably not thinking of a special town meeting.
We'll probably be okay, probably not.
And and people like it, I think, when we only have the annual town meeting because they're like, I know Aubrey, for example, we were thinking, I was like, actually, we're not going to do it. She said, what about this? I said, we're going to operate in the budget, and she was like, I love hearing that. So.
Okay. M E S water update?
Um, Richard and I went to the school committee meeting on Thursday and gave an update, so just to update everyone here. So the equipment is installed by the end of this week, it will go through an engineering inspection by McClure Engineering. After that, they will be doing a wash on the well itself, so they'll take the pump out, they'll clean some things, put it all back together. And then after that and everything's put together, the way it should be with the new equipment and the cleaning of the well and the pump and all that stuff, then it gets inspected by Mass D E P to be turned on. We're at their mercy in terms of when that's scheduled, so they didn't even want to guess. And then the other thing that's in process is with things like turn this on, turn this off, turn this on, turn this off, they're also working on how they will be, the testing protocols. So they might look different initially and then for the first, you know, and I don't, for the initial period, it'll be one test plan and then for the remaining, there'll be another one. I can tell you that throughout that entire year, it will be increased testing throughout because it's a pilot study and pilot study has more testing. So everything's moving right along and they told Richard and I that, you know, maybe you don't need to come to another meeting, they can just do an email update. So if for the next, if we have significant findings, we'll go in person.
So I have a thought, I don't know if anybody agrees with this, so after all the testing is done and we get to a point, we say, okay, this thing might work. I was thinking that we have school committee memorialize a vote to turn it on and then maybe we do a vote to memorialize it in sync, so everybody is unison. Okay, we're going to turn this thing on.
Well, we're going to turn it on for the pilot study anyway, but what do you mean?
Well, I think that we would allow allow the school committee to do a formal vote.
But what if they vote?
It involves them.
Say they vote no, so we're not going to do the pilot study.
They're going to vote no, but I'm saying. No, I don't think they're going to say no, the point of it is.
Hey, people might vote no.
It would, it would memorialize, I think, their involvement and participation with turning the well on for a formal use, rather than placing it squarely in Millville and then saying, well, okay, this did or didn't work.
Bottled water throughout the pilot study for cooking and drinking.
I know that.
Yeah, so.
We get to the point where this thing's like up and done.
Do you mean like after the pilot study, like?
Oh, I guess we could, yeah. I guess we could, we have them adopt it and formally say, okay, we're, this is it.
Yeah, so after the pilot study and then no more bottled water.
I mean, what the operator.
Makes sense.
Yeah, what the operator does is really determined by D E P.
Yeah.
What they do and when, frankly.
I'm just saying that it would be nice to have a formal vote memorialized by the school committee saying, okay, we're here, we've done it, we're done, we're turning it on. And we've got their 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 vote of confidence.
It's not, it really is a question of operating the system with the the new technology.
Right.
Which is the pilot study and that turn on is determined, you know, that use of the new technology is determined by Mass D E P. And that might, you can't predict what that timeframe is. So then what you're talking about is going from the bulk water to system water.
Right.
Which would be, so the time period is after the acid wash. I I I went there, Chris, I met with Chris this morning, so he was there. So he described this acid wash, which was still a mystery to me. So part of what it does, you know, the the water is really all about getting rid of the manganese and the iron, right? We've got too much of that and it's in the seams, it's in the, you know, the the water source. And so it's like a an enema, if you will, of the of the well and and it's an enema of the seams. So it clears out all the built-up manganese and iron in there, gets it out of there. And then they put the casing down the sides. And separately, they want to put this rubber casing down to where the, there's like a twenty-five, a seam down around forty-five feet, I guess it is, that really isn't helping the cause and is probably the main cause of the T O Cs. If they put the casing down, Chris wants to be able to shut that off. And as part of that, he, they might move the pump down lower to suck up the lower water from the eight-hundred-foot seam that's in there. You know, the pump's at four hundred and eighty feet right now, so all that's part of this factor, but the point is they're going to clear it out. And he expects that will be great and that's even before they turn on, you know, so the water can then flow basically and still be subject to.
Yeah, I think.
You know, that's really, I think, where you're at.
It's fair to say like, look, we're going to be switching from the bulk to well and let them know when that happens. Because that's going to be running through the pipes. I think maybe what would be helpful is to get a letter of assurance from Mass D E P that when this moves over, the water is safe for hand washing and things like that once we go over. I know, I know we've had this discussion, I don't know how many times they need to say this. We, and I I was just, I saw that, the chairman of the school committee posted that letter from Mary June, I was like, thank you. We, like, it's in writing from S D E P, so thank you for posting that, Dan, I appreciate that. So I don't, I don't know, like, what, I guess, an assurance that it's okay to use this as, that the water and the pipes.
Well, what I'm looking at is buy-in, buy-in from the school committee to try to mend the relationship between the town, the school committee.
I guess that's maybe, why don't you have a good relationship with the chair, why don't you ask, have a conversation, see what you think?
I'm going to have an ask, yeah.
Why don't you two, and then?
Because I just don't, I don't want to turn this thing on and then have them say, well, we, you know, we weren't aware of this, we didn't know, or some variation thereof. I want to make sure that all bodies are uniformly informed and that there is an acceptance that this is the procedure and here's what we're about to do.
Yeah, okay, so I think, why don't you have that, yeah, conversation and then October, because I don't think. And did you get an update on Chris, with, do they have anything scheduled for Mass D E P will do the inspection now?
Yeah, he's waiting for.
He's waiting for dates, okay, so I think once we get that date from Chris, then we should zoom over to the school committee and be like, hey, so they're going to do this inspection, here's the timeline, blah, blah, blah. Any, you know, and if any major concerns.
Yeah, I just think that we should have.
Inform them, this is the timeline, this is when you'll see this happen, so we want to make you aware.
Could do that.
Yeah, so I think that, and then have them, I don't know if they would vote on agreeing to the timeline, maybe, I don't know, something like that.
Of course, they would probably put out an official notification.
Yeah.
So their administration would have to sign off on it. I'm just looking for that official transition where it's documented, where school committees have formally adopted that procedure going forward. So that there's no, well, we weren't ready or, you know, but we didn't know the water's coming on or where's the bulk water? Like, there's no questions, we're just kind of done with it.
Yeah, so I think we we need the information from McClure Engineering of when the inspection is going to be done and then based on that, when we expect to end the bulk water. And then we can notify them, this is the plan going forward, please, please inform your committee, feel free to inform parents or teachers and anybody else that you would like. And then based on Mass D E P saying, yes, you can turn this on, we could add language in there saying, Mass D E P has, is in favor and supports this switch.
Right.
And then that would be all buttoned up.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Makes sense to me.
Okay. Because I don't know if, like, and I don't, like, I don't think that they vote, no, no, turn it on, but if they do, and then what it will, we're just going to do, we're just going to turn it on.
Well, what you're saying, turn it on, right?
I mean, ending bulk water.
That's right.
Ending the bulk water.
Versus, D E P dictates, turn on the new technology.
Right, so Mass D E P says you can turn on the new technology, we will be turning on the new technology.
I just want to remove all doubt from any individuals that may make a statement that could be, you know, untrue and state that, well, we weren't aware or Millville did this or somebody did that, somebody said something, so my point.
Okay, so I will work with Peter and Chris McClure on the timing and then send that over to you, Richard, and then we can.
All have a tall glass, you know, refreshing glass of water.
That's right.
Not pink or copper colored.
Be pink or copper color will be perfect and amazing.
All right, public forum?
I just got a couple of things quickly of the.
Oh, that's enough.
Well, I wanted to let you know the, there's a new lottery system that has been instituted, it was a year ago. There was a statewide vote, that vote went through, that they wanted to take a lottery system for vocational schools. That lottery system, we received it three weeks ago, two and a half weeks ago, and they've given us all the way to, all the way November first to go through the twenty-eight pages and determine what we want to have in it and what we would question. I'm not sure that there would be any change if we tried to do some things. One of the things was that date I was telling you about, that has to be declared by that date. That was one thing we wanted to try to make sure, but the the nuts and bolts of this comes down to this, it's a, it ends up being, it ends up being, the smaller you are as a town, you're going to, in in some cases, you can get pushed out of the kids having an opportunity to go. And I can give you an example, if you're from Milford, it's twenty-four point five percent of the budget. So the way that they've written it, they want twenty-four point five percent of the total population of fifteen, fourteen hundred kids would be for Milford.
A lot of kids.
We're one point nine percent.
We have one kid, maybe two.
Well, you got three hundred and fifteen incoming freshmen. You got one point nine percent of budget, okay? Talking six, seven kids. Right now, we get twenty-five, twenty-four.
In all grades.
Huh?
In all grades.
No, in the, yes, I'm sorry, you're right, I'm wrong. So the idea of this thing comes down to that, I'm very concerned that we've got to try to alter some of these things, trying to flatten it out, using five-year back, look back averages.
So this is not yet legislation, it's in the comment period is what you're in by November first?
It's going to be, it's already been, it's already been enacted by the legislature.
Oh, it has.
We tried a home real, home rule.
So what's November first? What 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 impact to what's established?
They asked us to look at a certain couple of things and see if we would like to make any changes to it. That's why I got another meeting thir, uh, to Wednesday, where we have to go again and take another look at some of the things and try to recommend some changes. One of them is a five-year look back.
Yeah, yeah.
Which would then even that out as opposed to all of a sudden saying.
Right.
Because you're going to go like this or like that and you're going to, you know, it's, the budget all of a sudden will get impacted. I'll probably have a small budget relative, whereas someone else is going to get, like, Milford's going to get dumped on.
Yeah.
But if we have twenty-five kids across the four grades, isn't that six, that's roughly six a year?
It's it's six, yes, towards the four grades, that that'd be, that'd be correct. But the 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 idea of it is. Um, but the 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 idea of it is, we're looking to see where. We can move that so that we have a blended average over the years on a look back going forward. Cause otherwise you will start doing this over time.
You've had thirty plus kids in there in the past. Forty three was the high number?
Forty, well, actually forty four was the highest we ever had. Yep, and you, you know, your your proportion is your budget. Is is on the headcount piece of it, but I didn't, I'm not gonna believe it, just a duff, a couple of different things that are changing here. The data I thought you'd be interested in, Pete, cause that would give you a much better handle on what that.
If they, if they adhere to that.
Well, it's in like, right now, it's in the legislation. And supposedly by November fifteenth. With ever changes we try to put in before that, which we're gonna meet Wednesday on it, uh, we're gonna have other changes we we were recommending, so.
Jerry, I think you're gonna get the record for most comments on a Facebook post.
The one thing that I think is important here is that. People are not gonna be well in tuned and wanna know why they pay taxes and their kids aren't going. Well, you gotta understand, this is gonna be a whole new way of looking at things. And there's the rules in here are very strict. If you've got a youngster, you want to go there, you better pay attention to the, I'm not gonna avoid the details. There's twenty pages of details of all the things you gotta do. So it become demographically and 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 you have to do a video and, you know. They've taken all that away from the the schools and said, now you guys have to, you as a parent have to provide that. Big difference. And I want people to be fully aware, so it won't be, as you just mentioned a minute ago, we didn't know about it. So I'm gonna make a noise on the thing as best as I can, and that's why I decided to throw it out there. Since you might as well get everybody all hot and bothered over it. Um, the other thing is I don't.
People still say they didn't know.
Well, I'm gonna do the very best I can. To amplify it. Because I don't think it's gonna be fair to have me getting called. Two weeks after the deadline goes by and say, oh, you son of a gun, you never left little Joey as his. Boy, it's not up to me. You've got a responsibility for your student, and the student has a responsibility to themselves. Next thing was the, uh, town hall, Pete. Um, I know it's a big dumpster out there, anything new news about that? Just a quick thumbnail on it?
Thumbnail is, uh, subfloor is already in for the first floor where they took out a quarter of the flooring. And the structural changes to the upper floor have, looks like they've been mostly made, you know, the. The designed elements to reinforce that are there, so. Uh, Joe will be here October sixth to give an update. In detail. But they're doing great work and the, you know, the the contractor we've employed is. Terrific.
And the last one, I'm sure that, um, Rachel's gonna talk about, um, on the, we talked about the, um, school building committee. And I think there's another meeting coming up, is there, Rach?
Yes, it was rescheduled for the first of October. So we haven't had a meeting since the last time we discussed. The school.
So nothing new. Okay, um, you're still looking at that date, then, if that's the case, nothing new. You're looking at a date in the spring. Before you meet. For vote. Be aware. Not trying to be a sous sa, I'm just trying to keep everybody understanding what's coming here. So there is, there is a couple of different things. Um, I'll try to make that meeting. I'll try to make that meeting as well. Okay, now that's it, Pete, thanks.
All right, announcements, upcoming library activities?
Yeah, I don't really have anything from them, and the senior center is just the same as before. They've got a bunch of, you know. Craft and painting classes, Thursday lunches, dancing, exercise, movie day. And so forth. Um, and they have a calendar that they post.
All right, correspondence?
We just got something that was, uh, to the board of selectmen from the Chestnut Hill Meeting House folks saying you're cordially invited. To attend the annual service at the Chestnut Street Meeting House and Cemetery Association on Sunday, September twenty eighth. At three P M. in the afternoon, refreshments will be served following the services, so. Nice little invite, pass it around. Cause Richard got that.
We got minutes, do we wanna vote to approve those? Anybody read them?
I read them carefully, edited them on your behalf.
I was scanning a few of them, uh, before we started the meeting, and you're good.
I'm good.
So what do you want? You wanna take a vote on, uh?
If you would, cause they've been lingering on this.
I'll take, uh, I'll make a motion to, um, approve the, uh, executive minutes from February eighteenth to twenty five. February twenty fourth, twenty five, March tenth, twenty five, and March seventeenth, twenty five, whenever second.
Yeah, and you mean regular meeting minutes?
That's right, they're top secret. So I'll amend my motion, they're.
Second.
Joe?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, Rachel?
I'm staying, cause I don't think I was there, so.
Cool, all right.
All right, we'll get signatures that we can.
We'll air mail it to you.
Peter, you called me a chair, that's not very nice. Uh, since we're, uh, since we're talking, any selectmen, uh, reports?
I have nothing, Joe.
I am all set.
Joe's got nothing. I really don't have anything. Rachel, you have anything exciting?
No, um, I do have the paper with me that showed the budgets. For this, we do school building options. Um, and we're looking at a range from a hundred and twelve million to about. A hundred and ninety five million for the different options.
What's the hundred and twelve million? Is that like an addition?
Um, that is just base repair and code upgrades only. Um, and that could be for any of the grades, but that would be. For the seven through twelve, cause that's what we voted for.
Okay, um. All right, I think one of us should go to one of the meetings in addition to Rachel. Um, a couple of points that I discussed. Well, I wouldn't say discussed with anyone, more that I thought of them in the last meeting when they had this up is. Like, they were talking about repairs being forty million dollars in April, and now they're a hundred and twelve million dollars in September. That seems odd. And also, I don't know if anyone's looked at the capacity of the schools, but the middle school holds eight hundred and forty students. And M E S holds five hundred and ninety five students, so that puts you at thirteen thirty five students. And we only have one thousand four hundred and forty four students, so that's a difference of a hundred and nine students. And we're looking at a two hundred billion doll, two hundred million dollar billion, one billion dollars, two hundred million dollar building. Um, because we can't find space for a hundred and nine students and then the two other very nice buildings. So I'm wondering if there's an opportunity, and I know we motioned this at the town meeting, special town meeting, when we passed this. To talk about looking at existing buildings and augmenting them and putting additions on instead of being tearing down a whole building. And like, that was built from scratch, you know, less than fifty years ago. And I know, Peter, you brought this up, we always use the B V T example, that building is older. And so. I, maybe I'll go to the meeting, I don't know, I guess I think. Looking at the capacity and what we're spending on a brand new building. And also. It seems like we don't take care of our things. So are we gonna build this building and then in thirty or forty years? Someone's gonna say, oh, we need another, we need just another new building. And I guess the, and on the maintenance and stuff. Like, no one raised their hand, like, around, like, it's forty, like, we'll save, we'll keep it at forty million dollars from the spring. No one said, hey, guys, we have eight billion dollars of repairs we need to make, we need to like. Can we put together a plan to do half a million of them between the two towns? Like, you know what I mean, like, and and do half a million this year, and in the three years, we'll do another half a million, like, no one did any of that stuff. And now it's all of a sudden forty million dollars, and now it's even over a hundred million dollars. And I guess I don't have confidence that we've built a brand new school that in even twenty years, it's gonna look nice. Cause we don't take care of things. I don't know if anyone else has opinions, but, so I guess I'll, if the meeting is October first, I'll try to go to that meeting and I'll bring my bodyguard Gary with me.
I like it.
Yeah, that would be great. Um, what was interesting is, um, on my flight here, I sat next to a guy who's on the. The, um, zoning board for Nantucket. And I was describing the, uh, what we're trying to do, build a high school. And I told him, we're looking at a budget about two hundred million, and he was absolutely shocked, cause. He seemed to indicate that that was more like Nantucket prices.
That is Nantucket prices.
Yeah, so, bit insane, um, and the problem is. I'm not a builder and I don't, like, this is not my expertise, so I don't genuinely know if. The, we're overestimating these budgets, like, the engineers can come back and overestimate and then. Uh, for what we really need, honestly, so. We might, it may be more realistic to have a cheaper building, um, but we might not be getting those prices. So it'd be nice if we could have, I don't know, just a better. Frame of reference for that, um, but I'm not the individual to have that for reference, unfortunately.
If I may, um, your point's well taken. The operating budget part of this is gonna be extraordinarily high as well. And, you know, it's nice, like, we built a. We built the senior center. And nobody put in an operating budget. We tried to tell them you're operating, we never did, no, we know how to take care of it. So you have a beautiful two hundred million dollar building, but your operating budget's gonna go up tremendously. To do that type of building, it's a lot more complicated than having a janitor's sweep the floor. I mean, that building gets to be expensive and it gets to be a a lot more expertise is necessary to get that building to work. And do all the modern things you wanna do. I'm not against it, okay? The thing is, I I am concerned, the numbers you recited, about forty million up to a hundred, whatever it is. Okay, remember, a lot of those numbers were given to two oh one. Two twenty twenty one. Okay, so they've been updated. And if you remember, Rachel, last meeting, they keep updating those numbers. The reason that keeps moving is because everything's going. So the original numbers, I remember hearing them too, saying, oh, which figured out me people, how much it costs. If you look at it now, um, and it's not their fault. I mean, what was, you know, two by four costs X, now it costs X plus, you know, this from the trade you're in. Everything's gone like that, so this thing continues and you're two years away from breaking ground.
Yeah, those numbers are pre tariff, I I don't know what impact that has.
Uh, it's gonna have a lot on that, on this, in the wood side of it, but the the idea of it really comes down to, um, that thing is kind of a ghost a little bit. Um, I don't begrudge the fact, if you've been to the school, and I hope if you haven't, you will, and anybody watching goes. That school's in desperate need of something.
It's not a nice school.
It's in awful shape. I just don't know, I don't know what, you know, if it comes down to buying a Lexus or buying a good Chevy. Um, I'm a good Chevy guy. Uh, that's just who I am, and I, I just hope that we can come to some accommodation. My concern is this thing's gonna get ahead of us before we get a chance to talk about it. And that's why I'm I'm trying to make a a noise about it, cause I agree with you. You're gonna have some operating numbers that are gonna spin your head.
It's not just the operating numbers, but the, um, like I said, when we passed this at town meeting, it was to look at all the options. And I feel like a hundred million dollar investment. Split between the middle school and the elementary school to add capacity. Would be way, and then, and then you take the high school offline, cause I have toured that school. Um, I went two years ago, I think, and it is in rough shape. But again, that's, no one's taking care of it for fifty years. So are we gonna build a brand new high school, and again, no one's gonna take care of it for fifty years again? Cause no one's invested in that school. And then when, and then you come to us with a forty million dollar number, why did no one raise their hand when it was five billion dollars or ten million dollars and twelve million dollars? So, and I know hindsight's twenty twenty, but it's like bam, forty million dollars, like, I just don't understand why no one was keeping a tab on this. Until we started looking at building a brand new high school.
And if I may, one last thing? The other, the other question I have, which I raised, I think, twice now. Um, is whether it's anonymity. With one town. Uh, both towns voting in favor of it to give you, um, a thirty year debt. Or whether in fact it is a situation where you would have a split vote, let's just say it gets split. Millville no and and Blackstone yes, or vice versa. What happens then? Well, people have said, well, it'll be like the super town meeting. I don't think that's accurate. My my reading is that, or what I've been told anyways, is that it it comes down to. You can't force another town into a long term debt. You can force them into an annual debt on your budget for a regular. One year operating budget, that you can do, and that's why the super town meeting is a remedy. What I'm asking, and I can't seem to get an answer from anybody, um, I'd like to know whether. Does it need to be both towns say yes? That puts a whole different look at at this thing.
Yeah, so I don't know. If I'm remembering this correctly, maybe I shouldn't say. I believe that the chairman of the school committee, um, Dan Keefe, said he would not force. A super town meeting, cause he thinks that would be uncomfortable, and I could be misspeaking, so Dan, if I'm wrong, let me know, and I'll post on Facebook, I was wrong. Um, but I think, I think he said he would not force that, but I don't.
Well, the idea is that, can you force it? It it may not be legal to be able to. Is my point.
Yeah, so I think, I think what you said makes sense, but so maybe that's something for our.
I I I kinda think, we kinda need to know that. Cause I think it'll make everybody at least have a better thinking about how this thing may roll out. I mean, without that information, I I don't, I think you're all just gonna wake up one day and it's gonna be, like I said before, it's no one outside.
Yeah, so, so I look at that as the question is a fair question, it's an important question. And you you would hope that it would be answered by council for B M R. But absent that, we, you you know, so, I haven't asked our council, but we're gonna get there. And, uh, it was more wait and let them provide the answer, cause it's really up to them.
You can just get the answer and hang on.
I think we should have the school building on our agenda from now on as well, cause we're, I know this is in the reports, if that's okay.
We'll think about it.
Okay, thank you. Sorry, Rachel, I spoke, I was, and you spoke, so please, please repeat yourself if you don't mind.
Sorry, um, yeah, if it's on the agenda, that's perfectly fine with me, I'm totally willing to, you know, compile a. Really systematic, um, recount of what happens at the meetings, um, so.
All right, moving on, town administrator report.
I'm gonna, I, we've covered all my stuff for the evening. Oh, so I can leave it at that for tonight, okay?
Items not reasonably anticipated, forty dollars part of the meeting? Nothing, I like it. Next regular meeting is Monday, October sixth, twenty twenty five. We are not doing an executive session because we have had enough tonight. Is that fair?
Unless there's anything urgent that Peter.
Nope, no, I spoke to the chair earlier and. And Richard.
We're good, so, I'll make a motion to, uh, exit, well. Adjourn public session here at eight fifty two.
Before you do that, um.
You're killing me, Smalls.
No, no, this isn't bad. I don't remember Fincom ever adjourning their meeting tonight.
They went in and had a meet, they continued their meeting and. I don't think they have to, yeah.
All right.
All right.
Then I'm good.
Yeah, well, it's now eight fifty three, doesn't matter. All right, I'll amend my motion to eight fifty three, so you're second it, Joe?
Aye.
Aye, Rachel?
Aye.
And what time is it there?
It's just close to two.
Two AM?
Yes.
Wow, you poor thing. All right. Good night.
Well, you have a nice morning then.
Study hard, Rachel.